Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is a special committee of the whole to deal with budget. Yeah, there's a delay. Let her know that. Wanted to start by acknowledging that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people, specifically the Lakongan-speaking people known today as the Songhais and the Esquimalt First Nations. Their connections to these lands continue to this day and that this meeting, like all their meetings, is livestreamed and available on archives for later viewing. I want to also just note that a couple, a few councillor-related items. One councillor, Green, is a disembodied voice you will hear from a speakerphone we have on the table there, so I'll make an effort to make sure she's included. As we go through the deliberations, she has to work from home this evening, so we're very happy that she's still able to join us, even in non-corporeal form. And we have councillor Eric Zelka is running a little late from work, and so he'll be joining us in about 20 minutes or so. So we'll start without, and we'll catch him up when he gets here. It is Committee of the Whole, so this is an informal way of getting through some of the items in front of us. And before we start, councillor Braithwaite also wanted to just say something.
Thanks so much, Mayor. I want to correct a misstatement I made at the Monday's Special Committee of the Whole meeting. And of course, the questioning the consultant I said or implied that I had a mathematics degree, which is not correct. My education includes a geophysics diploma and a number of years working as a junior geophysicist. I then spent a year as a mathematics instructor at the University of Technology in Leipapa, New Guinea. So I taught math courses at a university. I didn't get a degree in mathematics at university. So I apologize for this error and for any confusion this caused, and thanks for giving me the chance to make this correction and set the record straight.
I appreciate you making the record straight. Thank you, councillor Braithwaite. I also just want to point out, we're going to go hand this over to staff here in just a second to walk us through. It is open to the public to make comment, and just in the interest of keeping the staff here that need to be here after each department goes through and council asks questions, and we'll invite the public to come forward and ask questions of the individual departments. And at the very end of it, we'll also just open it up for any other questions that might happen. But just be aware, some of the specific department-related questions might might not be answerable at that point if the staff of Lappett Whistle endeavor to try and get answers. So with that, I will hand it over to, I believe, Mr. Payne, our Director of Finance, who is going to walk us through this evening.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, council, and good evening to the folks in the gallery and the multitude of folks, I'm sure, that are joining us online, the convenience of online rather than being here today. So I'll start today just to go over, I'll start by going over the agenda for today, which is similar to last week's agenda with a few additions. So we'll reiterate the budget principles used to compose the financial plan in its draft form, discuss the process and timeline. We'll go over, on a high level, again, the overview of the financial plan as it stands right now, again, in its draft form. We'll have a quick discussion about service levels, and we'll talk about revenue discussion. After that, we'll move into our operating budget presentations, and today that will include building and planning, parks, rec and culture, and engineering and public works, including water and sewer utility. So the principles used during the composition of this financial plan include a five-year financial plan. Excited puppy. A five-year financial plan principle whereby staff have put in a great deal of effort to provide as accurate of a five-year financial plan as possible. And as one would expect, as we move on through the years in the financial plan, the uncertainty gets stronger. However, staff have put a lot of effort into ensuring that the projections can be reasonably relied upon under current circumstances. Again, we ask council to have a close eye on years 2020 and 2021. The reason for this is we really want to encourage staff to embrace the continuity of operations concept in the five-year financial plan. So as soon as January 1st, 2021 comes around, staff will be under the impression that the financial plan has been approved in its form, and they will continue to spend, projects will continue to be executed. So that really strengthens staff's ability to execute the services and projects that council has directed. So with that, project budgets will carry over. We've carried over the remaining funds from projects in 2019 into 2020, and any projects that have remaining funding that were authorized in 2020 will be carried over to 2021. Our funding strategy, again, has changed a little bit. We have a number of special initiatives, council council priority initiatives. They total approximately $1.2 million this year. Because they're one-time initiatives, they'll be funded from surplus. And I just like to remind council that surplus is a finite funding source. It's not a sustainable funding source. So it's not something that can be reasonably relied on year after year. When it's gone, it's gone. However, staff have averaged the special initiatives spending over five years. We think it's reasonable, and given the history of surpluses, we believe that the district is in a great risk of completely depleting their accumulated surplus reserve. We've also aimed to include lifecycle costing in the financial plan as best as possible. You'll actually see the version three includes a lot more evidence of lifecycle costing being considered because version three will be for the purpose of the capital budget. So version two doesn't have that information, but version three takes a couple steps forward with respect to that. So just for folks watching and wondering what lifecycle costing means, it essentially is the full cost of a capital service for its entire life. So what council chooses whether or not to invest $5 million to build Carnarvon Park, for instance, council is really deciding not only on the construction costs, but obligating the municipality for the ongoing operating costs for the life of that building. So we quantify to the best of our ability what the full cost should be for the life of that building, and that's really the decision that council is making. We believe that we've taken some steps forward with respect to financial plan transparency, but as the versions move on, there's more and more transparency added to the financial plan draft, so that users can use it for a multitude of purposes. The vision of the financial plan is long-term. There's significant capital spending contemplated in this draft. And so, you know, staff believe it's important for council to consider the long-term financial impacts of such spending. So the budget process, I'll describe the budget process now, and many people ask, how do things appear in the financial plan? How can I affect how things appear in the financial plan? So the financial plan should represent council-approved service levels, and as the district hasn't formally adopted service levels, staff do their best to interpret what the services are already being provided to the community as it stands now and carry that service level expectation forward. So we ask ourselves, what's the community expectation for the funds that we have? And we've carried those service levels forward. However, council should have an opportunity at some point, anytime that they ask, to define those service levels, to vary those service levels. And we'll demonstrate that today. We'll have a conversation about some service levels that have been developed compliments of the Parks, Rec and Culture.
Mr. Payne, there was just a question here from councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to Mr. Payne. Just when you spoke briefly about the funding strategy and the $1.2 million surplus, and that, of course, it's a finite amount. It's not always there. Could you just briefly explain how the surplus arises in the budget?
Through the chair, thank you very much for that question, and it's an excellent question because pursuant to the community charter, we're not allowed to budget for a surplus, right? And a surplus would mean more funds than we need for our operating expenditures, our capital expenditures, and our debt principal, essentially. However, as is common with any local government, sometimes there's underspending, staff vacancies, or whatever operational reasons that create underspending in a budget, which creates a budgetary surplus. Or perhaps there's additional revenues that were not contemplated. So those surpluses accumulate over the years, and they grow, and they grow, and if there's deficits, they shrink. And so that amount really represents funds that have been taxed for previously, which is why the funding strategy is to use that accumulated surplus to support operating initiatives. So it's really, you know, it's a result of operating surpluses, so we use as a funding source for operating one-time initiatives. Thank you for the question. The second thing, the second driver of what appears in the budget process are council-directed initiatives. So we just had a conversation about that. There's one-time special initiatives that show up in there, and we've had a number of meetings lately about council priority initiatives. And thirdly, there's the staff interpretation action needed to implement council-endorsed plans. So if council endorses a water master plan or urban forest management plan, for instance, it's then incumbent on staff to translate that into reality, both in action and in the financial plan. So we come back to you and we say, we think this is what this plan aims to achieve, and this is how we want to achieve it. And you'll see evidence of that. Again, there's lots of initiatives in here that support, for instance, the urban forest management plan, and we go from there. So let's reiterate, and we'll discuss this later on in the presentation as well, but no service level increase or new service unless legislated or directed by council. So as, like I mentioned at the last budget meeting, we have a lot of staff here very prideful in their work, and they want to improve their work as much as possible. But often that requires additional resources, and that's really a council decision, whether to want to provide additional resource or change the funding priorities of other services. That's really a council decision. In the cases where we don't have a choice, it would be if there's a regulatory change or a legislative change that requires us to increase the service level despite what council says, so that can happen. So just remind the public that public input is welcome at every stage of these budget deliberations. This is deliberately, pardon me, deliberation number two of four. And the public is welcome to come speak at any point in any any part of the presentation. So the way that the financial plan has been developed is we've attempted to develop a draft financial plan that represents all of council direction, and so council can see the entire financial plan at once, and same with the public. So that's really our starting point. Sometimes there's the opposite strategy whereby you build the financial plan as you go through the deliberations, and then whatever the result is, that's the result. What we've done here is we've built a financial draft that we think represents all of council direction, and we can make changes to that draft as council directs throughout the process. So that's a little bit different than what I believe the district is used to, and some municipalities do it in a different way as well.
Okay, that's good. It's covering your next point, anyway, my question.
Thank you, your worship. So number four, any changes to the financial plan throughout the process will be by council direction and not council direction. Certainly, staff listen to the comments of individual councillors. However, if there's a substantive change that a councillor thinks is needed to the financial plan, I invite you to test the support of your colleagues and ask for it in the form of a resolution.
And if I just might be clear on that, we should be doing that as we go. So if we have a we're going through, and one department's looking at it, we want to give some directional change, this is the right time. It's appropriate now. We can do it at any time, but obviously, when it's fresh and top of mind, and we have a chance to ask questions, is probably the best chance to make those changes, so.
May I say something?
Yes, councillor Green, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to say I really like point four, that it's council direction, not councillor direction. I think that's a healthy way of enhancing group consultation and collaboration, so I appreciate number four. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Green.
Thank you. As we move through the financial plan drafts, every time that we publish a new draft, it will have a version number on there. This is version number two. Typically, we aim to have a new version out at least a week in advance of the next time that we discuss it. So tomorrow, we plan on publishing version number three, and we're trying our best to clearly mark that, so otherwise it's easy to the pages certainly change. They keep on growing. The number of pages keeps on growing. That's our transparency principle, right? The timeline for this, so we had our February 6th first operating budget meeting. This is our second operating budget meeting. We're planning on having capital project discussions on February 20th and March 12th. In my experience, I find those deliberations to be longer than the operating budget deliberations, mostly because we discuss capital project on a project-by-project basis. But we'll see, we'll see how that goes. March 12th, at least the plan is to wrap up on that day, and all of committee direction will then be tabulated for the final version, which will really show up in the financial plan bylaw form. So that's the plan. If council decides at some point during the process that further discussion is necessary, by all means, that can happen. We've got a bit of additional time before the statutory reading deadlines. So April and May will be our bylaw adoption. We'll plan to have first, second, third reading at the first council meeting in April, final adoption at the second meeting in April. That gives us one spare council meeting before the statutory deadline, if need be. So to reiterate the point made by the chair, council decision-making occurs at every stage of the budget presentation, so if you're holding back and you you want to see changes to the financial plan, please don't hold back. At any stage, that's welcome. And staff will amend the draft financial plan according to committee resolutions. If you feel it's necessary to wait until March 12th, until you've seen in detail the entire financial plan, that's also absolutely reasonable as well.
Mr. Payne, before you continue, in that timeline that you had up there, I noticed we've kind of left aside grants. And it's always one of those things that we always sort of dread getting to, so just curious where you see that deliberation happening.
Yes, thank you, your worship. What staff anticipate is to bring forward a council or committee report in the March timeframe, and what I envision is asking committee to reaffirm the funding levels that they would like. And my preference is to ask for what council's preferred funding level is prior to actually seeing the applications. There's also a number of administrative questions we'd like to ask in that. So we anticipate bringing that forward in March, and then forwarding the grant applications to do individual scoring shortly thereafter. And once that scoring is, the individual scoring is compiled, staff can compile the results and bring that forward. So I would anticipate early April for that compiled bit to come to committee.
Thank you. Just for confirmation, that there is some dollar amount in this budget already for those grants, I'm assuming, as it just left essentially status quo from previous year?
In the draft format, it's status quo plus 2%. So I'm going to go over the entirety of the financial plan again at a very high level. Last week, we discussed individual capital amounts. I haven't done that this time around, given that next meeting, we'll really dig into capital. So the five-year draft financial plan anticipates over $220 million in operating budget spending. And the capital expenditures expected over the same timeframe are approximately $69 million. $16 million of that would be contingent on grant funding, and that's your Uplands sewer separation project. $5 million of that would be borrowing, and that's your Carnarvon Park building, and the remaining would be $48 million in reserves. And so, as mentioned last, at the last presentation, $48 million in reserve funding is significant. That's almost the entirety of our current reserve balance. However, we are making significant contributions, or those contributions are anticipated in the financial plan, through that period. So for the benefit of seeing the big picture for the public and for council, what we've done is we've forecasted what our reserve balances will be throughout the next five years, including the capital expenditures. And we start with approximately $47.6 million, and we expect to end with $43.5 million. And that forecast is actually a little bit conservative, too, so if I were a gambling man, I would suggest that might be a bit higher. So essentially, what we see is a decrease.
Sorry, Mr. Payne, there's a question from councillor Ne.
Yeah, sorry, just a very quick question. I appreciate most of this as projections. I'm looking at the $16 million grant contingent funding. So I'm just wondering, in the event that we're not successful in getting those, any portion of that grant, where does the money come from, or where, like, do we take it from borrowing, reserves, or we just reduce the amount of capital cost? How does that work?
Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you for that question. That decision would have to be revisited. So essentially, the way that the financial plan is structured at the moment is we would not proceed with that capital expenditures until or unless the grant is approved. Council would be informed of the success or failure of that grant application and provided with options. We could use reserves, we could use borrowing, we could wait for future grant opportunities, so there's a number of options in that case. Excellent question. So again, beginning reserve balance at the beginning of 2020 is forecast to be 47.6, ending reserve balance 2024, 43.5 million, and that's approximately $4.2 million in our net reserve balance. And that would accomplish $69 million in capital spending. So staff feel that that's a reasonable decline in our reserve balance for what it accomplishes in capital spending. What we wanted to do this year, we didn't want another year to go by without council and the public having a high-level idea of how we're doing with asset management funding, asset replacement funding. And so staff got together and calculated on a very high level, again, estimates how much funding we think we need to set aside into our reserves for capital expenditures that are expected to happen in the future. And how much are we setting aside? How much should we be setting aside? So sustainable funding can be defined as, how much money would we need to set aside annually into our reserves so that reserves never go negative, and so we never have to incur debt to replace existing assets? So that's the aim of sustainable funding. In 2018, we estimated that funding levels were at about approximately 59% of what sustainable funding should be. In 2019, council decided to make significant investment into their infrastructure replacement funding, and that jumped from 59% to 68%, which is remarkable progress for a local government of this size. The financial plan, the draft financial plan for 2020 recommends an additional 3% increase for dedicated to infrastructure replacement funding, and that would jump the level from 68% to 82%. There's a more gradual increase recommended in 2021, which would increase funding levels to 85%, 94% in 2022, and nearly there in 2023, if our assumptions and predictions of what the sustainable level should be are correct. So again, the financial plan has a roadmap for substantial improvement and really closing the gap on sustainable infrastructure, if that is a council priority in this five-year window.
Mr. Payne? One question that always comes up on these sorts of, appreciate this is, the 100% means that we're putting, say, 1% a year away for 100 years to cover the cost type model. There's a reality, we probably have some more short-term investments, especially in asset pieces that are going to be enjoyed for the next, say, 100 years, and contemplation of spreading those costs out over those times. So how much of this contemplates the possibility of using some financial tools to borrow or to draw down reserves and pay them back later to kind of make sure that we're also contemplating not just the financial cost, but also the philosophical, how are we actually applying these costs across time?
Your worship, the sustainable funding contemplates only reserve funding and and the sustainable funding for all assets. So what it contemplates is all of our assets that we have currently in our inventory. When those assets will become due for replacement, will we or will we not have funds to replace those assets at that time? And if we don't, that's when debt financing may be necessary, or if we're lucky, grant funding will be necessary. So it's a pretty simplistic assumption. The calculations that make up that assumption are complex, but.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson? Go to councillor Green first.
You can't see my hand, but through you, Mayor, to everyone, I just wanted to say this is a key piece for a communication strategy to to the public. I think people really need to, even though it's simplistic, they need to understand it, and that relates to the, you know, potential taxation rate. I think that is a concern in the community, so I think this is a key a key communication strategy that we should contemplate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Payne referred to the gap in infrastructure funding requirements, and may come forward when we're talking more about capital planning, but have staff determined the magnitude in totality of the gap in infrastructure funding over time?
Through your worship, no, we have not. In fact, it most likely won't form a basis for what I intend to communicate. If it's something that council is keenly interested in, it's work that we can do. But I find reporting on the magnitude of accumulated infrastructure funding becomes very overwhelming to the community and to the public. And when you mention the many hundreds of millions, that it becomes overwhelming. And don't forget that the variables that are contemplated in the sustainable infrastructure levels are highly subject to change, inflation, investment returns, unit rates. So reporting an accumulated funding deficit might be accurate at some point, but it could become very accurate the next year, and the only impact it will have is making folks feel overwhelmed. So that's a personal choice I've made, but it's absolutely something that if council feels is necessary for the decision-making, staff can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've broken down the dedicated funding for every asset class, and we've sort of, you know, added a color to what we think is good and bad. And as I mentioned, you know, I think sustainable funding as a policy is a good policy. Anything less than that is could receive a failing grade in my mind. However, moving closer to that 100% is obviously favorable. So you notice in 2018, there was very few assets that were being funded at a good level in 2019. Although there was substantial increase, a lot of those asset classes remained at a poor level, you know, below, I would say, sub-70%. This financial plan really accelerates the sustainable funding for a lot of those asset classes. In fact, we take some undedicated funding and we dedicate it. So for instance, it was determined that the police vehicle funding, pardon me, the fire vehicle funding, annual funding was quite a bit shorter, smaller than what it should have been. So we appropriated a portion of the annual infrastructure reserve funding and dedicated it to the fire. And that shows progress to the public and to council about certain asset classes. They can feel comfortable are being funded sustainably. Equipment and vehicles are typically the easiest one because the lifespans are shortest. We can really predict within, you know, give or take two to four years when an equipment is going to need to be replaced. So we can say with high confidence how much we need to set aside for that. And that's why often you'll find that those asset classes end up being sustainably funded, which is what the 2020 financial plan certainly accomplishes. So we've updated our tax increase forecast for the five-year plans. There was a couple additions from the January 30th council priorities meeting, which adjusted the 2020 increase and thereabouts. So what we're looking at is a $242 increase to the median residential property for 2020, if council approves the financial plan in the form that it is now. And over the five-year plan, I believe the average is about $185 per year, if you were to take all of those those increases and average amounts, about $185. So I will just demonstrate the drivers of all of those, broken down into category. You'll notice a couple changes from the last schedule here. We've got urban forest management strategy that's been added for 2020. We've got urban forest management strategy that's been added for 2020 to the tune of 0.14%. That's really the difference from the last time. From the January 30th meeting, there was short-term rental enforcement expressed as a possible addition to the plan. So that's a 0.19% increase in 2020 for half an FT bylaw enforcement. Also, council asked staff to look at electric vehicle stations, and a very minute increase in 2020, that would be for the operating and maintenance of the electric vehicle stations if they're constructed in 2021. So we'll notice when we get to the capital plan, 2021 also includes, I believe it's $50,000 for electric vehicle stations. One thing that we wanted to put there, just because we want to counsel, know it's not quantified in the totals of the forecasted tax increase, and that's the community recycling bins. Again, that was a priority request that came out of the January 30th meeting, which would have an operating impact, we think probably significant. But we need to analyze what's really needed to accomplish that new equipment or what have you before we can give a reasonable estimate there. So as that information becomes available, we'll let council know. But it's there so that if council wants to start thinking about what's going to pad their tax increases in year 2022, 23, 24, that's something to take into consideration.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and apologize to all for being a little bit late. I was coming from another meeting. Sorry, back to the previous presentation, if it's possible. I wanted to ask about the, if you could help explain how the reserves do that sort of dish shape where they go down? And then you managed to, through your incredible accounting means, help them to start recovering to more healthy levels. Could you help explain that since by that time, we're spending $5 million more on infrastructure, on asset management, excuse me?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Annually, we're setting aside in the 2020 financial year, $7.2 million into reserve, and I believe we're spending about $12.1 million. So the net difference is what really shows up between 2019 and, or pardon me, 2020 and 2021. And so that continues, the transfers to reserve escalate throughout the plan. So they move up from $7.2 million. If council adds another 3% tax increase, that's another approximately $750,000. We move into close to the $8 million range that goes into reserves. And then whatever we need to spend on capital comes out of the reserves. Should I explain it? And actually, if I may add to that, Counselor Zelka, when we meet on February 20th, we'll begin by discussing reserves, and there I've got some reserve forecasts, and it shows the contributions to each reserve and the depletions of. So if it pleases the Chair, I will now move into the revenue discussion of the operating budget.
While you're doing it, I'll just check with Counselor Green, anything else? Any other questions?
No, thank you, that's great, thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Payne, if you could just point out which page you're on, for anybody watching at home, looking at the, again, for those at home, this is version two of the financial plan, that way people can follow along on the page.
Yes, thank you, your worship. We will be on page 22, and page 22 provides a good high-level overview of all the revenues that we will be discussing. These revenues are discussed in more detail in their own subsection throughout the financial plan. The departmental revenue, so for instance, corporate administration, finance, building, engineering, public works, those are all discussed as we talk about those particular operating budgets. So basically, today we'll be talking about miscellaneous revenue and up to taxes. So I will begin with the boulevard frontis taxes, and the boulevard frontis taxes are just mere to what we believe our boulevard expenses will be. Not the entirety of the district's boulevards are subject to the boulevard taxes, just those that are in the taxation area. Annually, we levy a business improvement area taxes, tax for the properties that are within the business improvement area. Council may recall that the BIA bylaw was just recently renewed, and it's for a five-year period. Right now, we've indicated no increase to that. However, we are still waiting to hear back from the BIA as to what their budget will be. But it will have no property tax impact to the remaining users, simply because it matches the expenditures for that year. So we grant them whatever they ask for, and we receive those in BIA taxes. So this year, so now we're going to talk a little bit about our grant in lieu of taxes, and our grant in lieu of tax portfolio is very, it's not complicated. There's essentially two federal properties that pay us a very small grant on some of the parks that outlie the district, and there's just modest increases predicted for those two properties. The bulk of our grant in lieu of tax revenue comes from UVIC indirectly. It's actually the ministry that pays that, and we get approximately $46,000 to $48,000 for our half of UVIC. And I just pointed out in the financial plan, I'll point out to council and the public now, had that half of UVIC been subject to taxes, it would be worth about 50 times what we receive in the grant. So we receive about 2% of what the grant amount would be worth if we were taxable. And that's, and I say that neither as a negative or a positive, but it does represent a significant increase that the district makes in post-secondary education that I think should be recognized.
Counselor Patterson, and Counselor Appleton?
Thank you. So just for clarification on that, that really would amount to not tens of thousands, but hundreds of thousands of valuation.
Correct. It would be about 50 times, $50,000.
Counselor Appleton, and Counselor Breathwaite?
Thank you, through you to staff. Just, and excuse my ignorance here, but can you elaborate on the formula or the basis on which that number is derived? I'm going to guess that there is some formula or some basis, whether it's based on physical area, or value of land, or nature of institution that arrives at that number. I'd just like a little bit more detail on that.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. The grant in lieu that we received from the ministry for university properties, it's not subject to any legislation or any regulation. They have a consolidated fund that they establish every year. To my knowledge, it has an increase. So the total fund that they distribute to all of participating university municipalities has an increase. And last, I understood they distribute that based on assessed value. So the portion of UVIC, of the assessed value that belongs to us, of the entire assessed value of all the universities that get paid out of that fund.
That is very accurate. Counselor Breathwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, I know that in the past, we have written a letter requesting the province to look at this number, and I would like to suggest that perhaps once again, we write another letter. I know it's probably not going to go anywhere, but when you look at how much Esquimalt receives federally for having DND in their municipality, which I believe is about $11 million of federal money that they get, it would be interesting if we could even get a small 1% increase that would even cover the cost of all of our emergency services who have to respond to UVIC, which I'm sure the fire chief could talk about as well, and the training that we give for small space rescues, I think it is, Fire Chief Hughes, something like that. But anyhow, I just think that perhaps if we could ask, if there's an agreement around the council table, if we could ask that a letter is written once again, just to state our case.
Just call it a donkey-hody letter, just tilting at windmills, asking the... You can give that direction, I'm happy to write a letter, I know the result of it, but we can do it. Counselor Green?
Yes, excuse me, would it be worth a meeting with the Minister of Finance as opposed to writing a letter?
It'd be Minister of Education, I think would be the people who are, anyway, it's up to this body if they want to give some direction, we can do that. We've had meetings in the past, I can tell you that, it hasn't been well-received.
I'll make a motion that the mayor be instructed to write a letter to the province, asking for reconsideration of the amounts of the pool of money that is distributed to the municipalities that have universities and colleges within them.
And I'll second that.
He's allowed a debate, just Counselor Neam?
I mean, we've done this repeatedly in the past, and it goes nowhere on deaf ears. And I, you know, unless somebody's got some kind of strategy about some other way to administer or to give some ideas, I think just sending the same letter, I'm not sure. I mean, if you want to do it with your time, I have no objection to it, but I really don't think that there's any effect. If somebody could put some thought together about how you could consider readministration or something that would, that the province could consider, but I can't think of it right now. So I don't really, I don't really see the point of it, but I'm not going to get in the way of it, that's for sure.
Counselor Zelka?
Very briefly, the reason why I support this is that it's a new government compared to the last time we sent a letter, so that gives me hope.
Okay. Counselor Patterson? I'll be just a second, Counselor Green.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to thank Mr. Payne for highlighting this in the budget because I think this is something, you know, it's not, it has not in the past been evident in the budget, and when you look at magnitude of not tens of thousands, but hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact, it's significant, and so I think it's great that it was highlighted, just so that most residents understand it. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. I'm not opposed to a letter-writing campaign, but I sometimes think a personal meeting can be more compelling, and it might be important to include our Director of Finance in that meeting, so that was my idea. And it could include both the Minister of Education and the Minister of Finance.
I'm happy to make that request in the course of writing the letter. If this motion goes forward, I can make that ask to meet. I should just share an anecdotal story of the... Okay, thanks, Counselor Green. My, when the last time I met with the minister on this file, there was a protest outside for student housing, highlighting the hundreds of thousands of seats that they needed for student housing, and it was just funny because it highlighted the political impossibility of any education ministry to give extra money to Oak Bay at a time when they also find things as basic as housing for students. So I'm not, I'm happy to write the letter, I'm happy to make the case, but it's a tough one politically for any provincial party to make these changes. But there's a motion on the table to do so, I'm happy to do so if that's the will of council. I'll call the question, I'll lose in favor. Opposed, Counselor Green? Counselor Green, can I get your vote?
Yes, I support that.
Okay, thank you, so the motion passes. All right, and Aneet was rather, no, that was Counselor Breathwaite, yeah, Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, just a quick question through you to staff regarding Comoson College. I don't think I've really gotten a straight answer ever over the number of years. Do we receive any money, any grant in a grant in lieu from Comoson College? And if not, why not?
Through your worship, no, to my knowledge, no part of Comoson is within Oak Bay, although...
No, the reason is that Comoson is not a university college, and it's only universities get that grant.
Yes.
And one of the reasons that our grant has gone down precipitously over the years is the fact that they've changed a number of colleges, Capilano College, et cetera, to university colleges, and so the same pool of money has been split multiple ways with additions. Fun bit of history.
Okay, thank you, if I may carry on then. The next item we'll discuss in the revenue consolidated schedule here will be the 1% utility revenue, slight decrease in here, but these are very prescriptive amounts that we receive from utility operators that operate within our municipality, Shaw, Telus, Fortis. They're based on revenues from 2018. 1% of those revenues are contributed to us, and so we know exactly how much we're going to get, and we just so happen to be getting $8,400 less in the 2020 year than previously. The next item here is property tax penalties and interest. We've increased it, what you may consider significantly, but our actuals last year exceeded this even more. I think our actual property tax penalty revenue and interest on arrears and delinquent revenue was approximately $191,000. The reason staff haven't jumped to increase that in the budget is we've been conservative here because we don't want people to pay their taxes late. We want to work to ensure that taxpayers have every opportunity not to pay their taxes late, and so we're hoping that it goes down. Mind you, it's difficult sometimes. Now, there was a substantial increase last year. I wrote the speculation tax here, but that's not what I meant. My deputy reminded me this year, it was the additional school tax amount. So those amounts really amplified what the 10% penalty would be levied upon. So there was a $50,000 increase in actuals last year. The next item on the schedule is operating grants. A lot of these grants are related to special projects, so those will go up and down as special project funding goes up and down. But there are a number of operating grants that we receive annually, such as the Small Communities Grant and the policing grant, the Traffic Fund Revenue Sharing Grant. We've held traffic fine revenue sharing as it is now, it's very difficult to predict, even though we've had conversations with the ministry. Essentially, it depends on two factors, how many traffic fines are collected for the province, and that, though fines are split up based on your cost of policing. So you're actually punished if you're policing, it costs less than other municipalities, they receive the lion's share of it, and our policing is reasonable compared to other municipal forces. But there is a decline that we're predicting in the Small Communities Grant. The Small Communities Grant is reduced as communities grow. That's not really what the driving factor is here. It's as assessments increase as well, it's also reduced. So Oak Bay's maintained a higher average assessment, so our Small Community Grant has gone down over the years. The next item on the revenue schedule here is the capital grants. Again, these are directly related to capital spending, so any decrease or increase is directly related to capital spending, so I won't discuss that in detail, it's just related to the projects. And lastly, we'll discuss our investment revenue, which we've increased the budget by $523,000. There's good evidence of higher returns over the last number of years. The majority of our portfolio has been concentrated in the Minnesota Finance Authority Money Market Fund, and essentially, the return on that Money Market Fund has doubled over the last two years. So that's why we've seen such significant increase. It seems like there was some hesitation to increase this budget over the last couple of years, and there's sort of good reason for that because any additional investment income that we earn is typically earned on two things, our accumulated surplus and our reserves. So any interest we earn on reserves has to remain in the reserves. So even if we increase the budget as we have this time, we have to offset it with a transfer to reserve. There is a net increase to our general revenue of about $150,000, so that reduces the tax impact by about $150,000. But the remaining in the budget at least has been a portion to a transfer to reserve, just to... But the reason that I've put it in here, although it's an in and out, it represents part of our sustainable infrastructure funding, so it supports the calculation of how much we're setting aside for our reserves, and that's important information when thinking about capital spending. So we've brought it up to what we believe reality will be for the next five years, and we'll see what happens in the markets. So that concludes our revenue discussion. I'll pause here, ask the Chair if any of council or the gallery would like to ask additional questions, and if not, we will discuss service level. and if not, we will discuss service level budgeting.
We've already asked some questions, was there any additional questions in this session? Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much, um, bringing up the, uh, topic of the speculation tax, um, I know there were, uh, some funds that the province collected within the District of Oak Bay, where did those funds go? Please?
Uh, through your worship, I would only, I could only speculate that it goes into general revenue. I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know the answer.
It does not come to us, is the bottom line for our budget considerations, yes. Thank you. Um, no other question, I have just one quick question for you, the, the, uh, the question of the Boulevard frontage checks as well, it is, and we collect that money on, and for those who aren't familiar, uh, it's a, uh, it's a tax that some blocks pay, and it covers the cost of mowing and services on the boulevard, uh, it's been sort of a question mark for quite a number of years as to whether or not it, it makes money or loses money, uh, if it's helpful or not helpful, uh, it's a very strange tax and then it's very sporadically applied throughout the municipality and it uses parks, uh, workers for it, so since we have Parks and Rec here and, and, and finance, is there any clarity we can get on that or any way of sort of having a sober look at that and seeing if it actually makes sense for us to maintain that? Um, because it's not necessary, most parts of the municipality cover their own boulevard maintenance costs, um, we do collect money for it, and if it is a net earner, I guess there's no harm in keeping it, but it's always been a curiosity. Do we have clear understanding of where that sits net to parks operations and budget?
I can just answer, uh, through you, Chair.
Welcome to staff, thanks.
Thank you, um, just in regard to the balance of costs related to that tax, we actually, uh, in that department in Boulevard Tax Expense, we actually, uh, spend more than the balance that's, uh, shown here as revenue, but it is a, a commingling of both, uh, taxed boulevards and then other work that we do, so, um, I don't know that we have a finite example of, uh, you know, whether that tax revenue is precisely what we should be billing, uh, but, uh, basically we could probably do that for you, do, do an analysis of what we're spending.
Yeah, I don't think it's so urgent that it needs to be done as part of this, this budget cycle, but if we're talking about service level discussions as a municipality, um, I think that's one of those ones, it's always been kind of a, an odd hangover from our past day where we used to do more of this work, uh, and I think most people frankly sort of wonder why their boulevard gets randomly mowed, and don't necessarily understand the mechanisms for it, so, thank you.
If I may, your worship, I, I, I believe that the Boulevard, um, frontage tax is somewhat optional, if I, if I may say, I hold a not speaking.
It is, you can, you can opt, you can opt out of it, it's like it's a two-thirds vote of the block to, to be into it, yes, or not, yeah.
So, so I believe what the, the accounting mechanism behind it right now is we fund approximately 75% of the total Boulevard frontage tax, or Boulevard costs with the frontage tax recognizing, or at least the philosophy is that recognize that some people receive a direct benefit of having the boulevard that fronts their property well-maintained, and the remaining 25% is really city boulevard that no one receives a direct benefit from. That's the idea, now if we had a, um, uh, a, a good work order system that, that, um, uh, identified where our crews were, how much time was spent, we could quantify in greater detail, that sort of thing, and that's something frankly we would like to have at some point, but no, not available at this time, so I just wanted to add a little bit of, uh, additional information there.
Thank you.
So, uh, building and planning, uh, we'll be moving to the building and planning budget, uh, I will just pull up the, um, the operating budget, uh, schedules in the financial plan, just for one moment, please.
While you're doing that, I'll advise, if anybody from the public wishes to come forward to ask any questions on that session, you're welcome to do so. We do not have a large audience here tonight from the public, so, uh, seeing anyone, we'll, we'll move on. Oh, we have service level budgeting first, is that correct?
Yes, your worship, so we'll, we will now discuss service level budgeting, uh, on a high level, um, and the information can be found on page 95. We're very grateful this year to have, uh, a part, a, a strong partnership with, uh, Parks, Rec and Culture and, uh, to help develop some service levels so council can have an idea of what, uh, could be expected from other, uh, service levels. So we've really, um, I'll just talk on a high level what the objective of the service levels are, and they're essentially fourfold, we want to be able to clearly demonstrate to the public the service that they can expect for the budget that's being approved by council, we want to be able to empower council to vary those servicing levels, those service levels, so they, they can respond to community need as, as time goes by. We want to ensure that staff are not unilaterally deciding to change service levels, so if there's a, a, a resourcing problem, staff might be put into the tough situation of choosing to reduce service A so that they can maintain service B, and, uh, essentially, we just want council to be aware of, uh, how much money it costs to sustainably, um, uh, resource the services that you expect , uh, staff to deliver, and fourth, we want to promote transparency in the budget and accountability. So service levels can be defined in many different ways, they can be static and quantitative, for instance, we could say Director of Engineering, we would like you to maintain 4,000 meters of sidewalk every year, and that's it, very static and, and, um, and quantitative, or we could be qualitative and we'd say, oh, on top of that, needs to be free debris, so if there's, debris appears on that sidewalk, it's our expectation that that gets cleared within one to two days or whatever the surface level has to be, so you see, that's a, that's not static, that's dynamic, and it's also um, a bit qualitative, maybe you say, and the sidewalks need to be kept in a visually appealing manner, so you can choose as council, um, uh, the service level, uh, definition as, as well as the service level itself. And thirdly, you can have regulatory service levels, so an example, um, would be NFPA standards for, uh, um, uh, fire response, al- although NFPA isn't technically a regulatory body, but it sort of, uh, demonstrates what we mean, you have a, an external body saying to the municipality, this is the service that we should meet. So we've got a couple of examples in the financial plan, and the first one, uh, is very simple, but it sort of existed as, as a, a policy, it, uh, on the books for a number of years, and that, eh, with respect to, uh, by law enforcement, so council has previously approved the four priority levels being safety and serious environmental concerns being number one, construction without a valid permit being number two, flagrant or notorious infractions, and then as number three, and four, community and neighborhood impact. And the, and the department itself has articulated here to council what really a reasonable response time council can expect. Right, and that, that was sort of inherent in the service delivery over the number of years, um, you know, it, it would be, uh, unreasonable for us to expect our half-time, um, bylaw enforcement officer to be able to respond to every single bylaw complaint with, in the same business day, so they've outlined service objectives throughout the years, and there's been no formal endorsement of those service levels by council, but this is what the budget supports, so we've, we've identified it in here. We work closely with, uh, Mr. Hidley, uh, Hidley on the, uh, parks service levels, and we've got a number of, uh, different, you know, they do a ton of work down there, so th- this is a good overview of some of the stuff that gets done, we've identified service levels for gardens, so here I'm scrolling to page 97 for those that are watching. We've got a number of gardens that the, the Parks Department maintains throughout the year, and every garden has a different service level attached to it, so it could be well groomed, groomed or moderate, and every single one of those service levels have a specific definition of what, uh, council and the public can expect from that. Same goes for our sports field service level, so that's a different asset that has a different sort of ex, community expectation, so we've defined what, uh, the community can expect for our sporting fields by assigning a service level to it. Likewise, natural assets, or pardon me, nat- natural areas, um, uh, Uplands Park would be a good example, Uplands Park would be a good example, uh, playground, uh, playground equipment, the maintenance related to that. Parks and green spaces. Washrooms, so we have many washrooms, they need to be cleaned, how often are we going to clean them, what can the community expect from that? And then solid waste, so we've, we've, um, you know, council has sort of been having this discussion recently, asking, well, we would like to have, uh, recycling bins possibly, uh, and so that's a service level discussion, and, eh, you know, when we bring forward the options for that, we will say, "Council, this is what you can expect for this amount of funds, here's option A, B or C, what service level would you like to implement?" So we'll have that, so we already do that, you know, with a, with our community solid waste as it stands.
Council Breathway?
Um, thank you, and through you, Chair, um, I think this is wonderful, this information, and I, I'm wondering if it's going to be placed on the website, um, alongside, um, some of the locations, like, I know that where we list on our website the different parks, et cetera, that we have, and would it be then, you know, Anderson Hill Park is in a natural level, area level three, and then, uh, you know, an appendix to show what, um, what service that would entail?
Sounds good.
I just, sorry, just to follow up, I just think that would help if people are wondering, and then you can always direct people to, to what the expectation would be for that park, so.
Uh, absolutely, and I think, uh, uh, it also, uh, demonstrates to the community the really, the breadth of the, the service that they get, which is substantial. So, uh, absolutely.
Ask you for clarification, um, my read of this was the current level, uh, these have never been documented in this way in the past, as I, I can't recall seeing this before, uh, so this is a first effort at quantifying what's being done and what are the options available within that bandwidth of sort of roughly acceptable from the highest to lowest, um, is that accurate? And if so, is, is the adoption of the financial plan, which these form part of, adoption of these, these service levels, I guess is probably the, the question I would ask.
So, your worship, um, if, if council wishes to formally endorse service levels, that would be a good idea, and I wouldn't see the financial plan, uh, approving the financial plan as an endorsement of these service levels, but it, it does articulate really what is possible under this draft financial plan, so these are the service levels that are, are being undertaken. I think that answers your, your question, a- and you're right, these service levels have never been formally documented except for in the internal work that, that, uh, uh, Mr. Hidley's crew has done and, and, and in his, in his head, and he's kindly, uh, he's kindly let us in, a- and you know, I have to s- tell a, a little story because I asked Chris, I said, listen, service levels are about options, right, so can you please provide options, and I consistently got the highest service level, that's it. He really does not want to provide a worse, what the public might, might perceive as, as a worse service, so you can s- tell the pride is in the work there, and it's evident in the service levels that are being, uh, implemented at, at this time. So continuing on, uh, with the service levels, uh, one other thing I.
Council Patterson has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'm just wondering, we did, um, eh, conduct surveys of the, of the public to inform budgets last year and again this year. I'm wondering if, um, the information arising from those service was taken into consideration in any way, if there was anything that would have impacted on this, um, and if, uh, if so, if you'll be speaking to it, or if that's something that is more, that we will be tracking going forward into the future, thank you.
Yeah, this year's closes today, so we'll have our summary, I think, at the next meeting, um, is, I don't know, as to how this is incorporated, those previous ones were incorporated, Ms. Varella?
Uh, I'm not sure how the previous ones were incorporated, but we are bringing back a March 12th, uh, report, and we will be providing that online, and we will acknowledge, uh, how or if, uh, the previous years, uh, we received just over 300, uh, I believe, I don't think we got down to the final count, but that's a marked improvement over last year's, I believe, 97-ish responses, uh, so again, we'll be bringing back that report March 12th.
Thank you very much for this, and I, I will, since we seem to be moving on past the service levels, uh, piece, I, I just want to express appreciation for, for laying it out, I think this is an incredibly important part, both for decision-making and for the public's awareness of what goes on, so, uh, it's, that, it's a lot of work, uh, to actually take things out of Mr. Hidley's brain and put on paper, so I, uh, uh, and all the rest of your brains, um, so just want to pre, express our appreciation for that because it actually will really help us, I think, in the long run, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and just to, uh, complete the final service levels that are documented in here, we recognize with, uh, with the Parks Crew and much like the Public Works Crew, they need to leave capacity to respond to ad hoc requests, so we have to find in here what the current capacity for ad hoc requests is and, and, and how, uh, and the service that customers can expect for that.
Council Appleton?
Uh, thank you, your worship, I, I think, and, and I, I concur with the mayor that, that this is important information for us to be able to communicate to the public. I suspect very strongly that one of the follow-up questions that we'll hear from the public about this, um, is asking whether or not similar information can be provided about engineering and public works, and, and with the clear understanding that the Director of Engineering is working on many different aspects of the asset management framework and, 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 and attempting to characterize the broad scope of work, I'm just wondering whether we could just get some, just a broad comment about what format that might take or, or how feasible it would be to even approach something like this from an engineering and public works perspective?
Mr. Haran?
Yes, the, excuse me, through your chair, I didn't expect to not be able to speak there, um, we, we definitely have, uh, levels of service, standards a- a- around in a number of areas, but not in a way that we're ready to publish yet, uh, but that is the aspiration, that's, so there's a handful that we do report on own, um, eh, so the, in the engineering services portion of the budget, there's the handful of metrics that, so for us, that's, it's some of the metrics that are talking about what happened in the past also capture what we're trying to do in terms of level of service, for example, um, regulatory requirements in terms of clean drinking water is 19 bacteriological tests per month, so that's one level of service where, where we, we measure that and make sure that we do that, um, there's a handful of others, uh, two, uh, for example, uh, there's going to be a certain number of fire hydrants that take a certain level of maintenance per year, a certain level of uh, valves that need to be exercised per year, so we're trying to, uh, define those and, and expand that program so we can really uh, understand what our targets are in a year and, and in terms of the minimums, and then whether we've met those or not, and some areas we have it, and some areas we're still d- developing in.
Thank you very much. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, your worship, and the last, uh, level service which is, um, which is close to insignificant from a budget standpoint, but significant from a, a community engagement and, uh, a political would be our memorial benches, so, you know, when we, when we, um, put in our memorial benches, there's an expectation formed from the folks that, uh, donate for that in terms of the maintenance of, of those, so it, it's one of those that, that's important to articulate what the expectation should be for, for everyone involved, so that was the last one that was, that was in there, so, thank you for that, um, now we can move on to, uh, uh, building and planning if it pleases the Chair.
Uh, I'm happy, is there any other questions? Uh, invite the public as well if they want to come and talk to any of the things so far. Is anybody coming forward, uh, we're happy to move on, do I introduce Mr. Anderson, or do I give it back to you, Mr. Payne, to, to, hi, back to you?
Yes, thank you, your worship, I'll, I'll, uh, introduce the operating budget and, uh, discuss some of the accomplishments, eh, expected accomplishments, talk about some of the variances, and, um, uh, our Director of, uh, Building and Planning is here, if there's any detailed or operational questions that council or the public may have. So we are on page 43 for the, um, public and staff and council. So as mentioned, what we really tried to do with this financial plan as best as possible is not only provide, you know, transparent financial information, but really translate what that means in terms of services being provided, uh, to the public. So I'm going to take this opportunity to highlight some of the things that the department has accomplished, not everything obviously, not everything on this list, and some of the things that are being contemplated for 2020, so in 2019, uh, Housing Needs Report, uh, was prepared, and a Development Community Amenity Contribution was also prepared, um, there was also a new Heritage Conservation Area, uh, prepared to include in the OCP, and, uh, the, uh, Community Climate Action Working Group was also initiated, so some of the, some of the, uh, just, just a few of, of the main accomplishments uh, led by this department in 2019, in 2020, uh, some of the things in the, on, on the books for completion are the Secretary Suite Study, um, commencing the Village Area Plan Preparation, um, completing the process to amend the OCP to include the Heritage Conservation Area that was, uh, developed in 2019, and implementing, uh, the Building Energy Step Code 3, which is a significant, um, a significant difference. Now we'll just move down to the operating budget here on page 44. There are a lot of revenues that are attributed to this operating area, so I'm going to go through the variances in, in those revenues, and we'll have a discussion about that. There are a lot of revenues that are attributed to this operating area, so I'm going to go through the variances in in those revenues. We'll have a discussion about that. The business licenses, we've uh, kept flat in in the budget, uh, simply because uh, we haven't increased. Business license fees whatsoever, so we expect a similar amount of uh, um, revenue next year. And 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 for the most part, our our business. Community remains pretty static as well. Dog licenses, uh, we've uh, kept flat as well, uh, simply because again, there hasn't been any increase in in the dog licensing fee, but council may consider increasing that, considering that. Uh, animal control services uh, have increased. We'll we'll talk about that later in the budget. And if 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 it's council's philosophy to maintain a certain portion of animal control services funded by taxation. And a certain funded by those that have uh, have pets, then we should maintain that ratio. As the costs grow, so so should the. Uh, dog license fees, but we'll have opportunity to talk about that at some other point. Uh, the the parking and M M T I fines have been uh, reduced by three percent in the budget uh, from 2019 to 2020, and that reflects a a trend in in fewer. Parking fines. Staff would like to engage counsel in a discussion about service levels and philosophy when it comes to parking enforcement at some point. So that that isn't, that is an intention, um, uh, depending on 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 other priorities, and that would certainly influence. This revenue amount there. So right now, we're just uh, predicting our future revenue based on, you know, five-year trends. The next revenue there, this most significant portion is the the building permit uh, revenue, and I've actually prepared a. A quick presentation to go over this, because it it is significant and and it's important to uh, to discuss. All right. Okay, so I just want to go back a little bit in time and and show the trend of actual building permit revenue and what we've projected. And you'll see the cat and mouse. Uh, game that budget has played with actuals. So you'll notice in in uh, 2015, this is. Where our actual building permit revenue was around just above uh, 500,000 and and. Our budget was above that. So we said, okay, so for 2016, we'll reduce it, right? The orange line is is our budget. We'll reduce it to meet what actually happened in 2015. But then the actual actually increased in 2015, so. We said, okay, well, we'll increase it. And then so it continued that way, right? And you see, we're just sort of following it. Now, now that we've started to rely on these revenues is is sort of linked to taxation. Now we're hesitant to reduce it because that means a tax increase, right? So um. I wanted to reassure counsel overall, it's okay. You see, this is a a deficit that occurred in the 2015 year. We've had surpluses from 2016 through to 2018. That's the green there, and then we had a a deficit last year. Overall. The the deficits and surpluses add up to a a positive $111,000. So, you know, not not to worry. Mind you, um. It appears to be, remember that uh, uh, user fees such as building permit revenues are supposed to pay for the cost of the service. Often they don't contemplate the significant overhead uh, that should also be recovered. So. The fact that we're showing a direct surplus of $111,000 shouldn't be, shouldn't be a concern. Now, what I would like to do in the financial plan is really de-link our building permit revenues from taxation. Because if I were to continue and follow this trend, I would have to reduce by approximately $250,000. That's a 1% tax increase as it is. What we really should be doing is sort of, um, you know, riding the the volatility by. Uh, actually linking the surpluses and deficit to a a transfer to reserve um, budget. So we can, we can essentially say. This is a transfer to reserve that we've budgeted, but it's contingent on achieving this level of building permit revenues. If we drop below that, we simply do not transfer that to reserve at the end of the year, and then there's no tax impact if the next year we need to reduce. Uh, the building permit revenue. So I'm going to work on slowly doing that uh, in 2020. 2020. In 2020, we will um, keep the revenues flat. 2021 and 2022, we've reduced it each year by 25. By point, uh, $25,000. This was just an attempt for me to to show you the impact of those budget changes to the building permit revenues over the years, right? So in 2016, they reduced uh, a projected revenue significantly, and it increased taxes by 0.82%. And then they've been living, you know, we've been living a good life the last couple of years here. We've been able to reduce the the tax increase by half a percent in 2017. And almost a full percent in 2018 because the building permit revenues have have increased. Again, I I I think this creates an artificial uh, um, decrease in in your property taxes, which should really. Uh, fund ongoing operating predictable expenses. So if we if we decouple that, then you see this sort of trend here, 2019, 2020. So a percent across the across the board. Um, I'm just going to pause there if anybody has any questions about that, because that was a, that's the significant portion of the operating revenues for that.
I have one quick question, and that's just um. Not too far into the actual operational needs of this, but in a couple of years ago was that line was going up, we ended up having to hire a couple, one or two more bodies to to. Just to handle the load. The reality is that the Building and Planning Department has to have bodies to handle the number of building permits and. Handle the plans and things. So um, we don't have a terribly volatile staffing here or or a big one. So how does that get managed in terms of overall pieces? Is that? From a budgeting perspective?
Thank you, your worship, and and that's a good question, because um, i- i- in general, in theory, it sounds okay to have your staffing model variable. In reality, that's difficult to implement for for labor relations reasons and and um, for other operational reasons. So. In reality, what happens is your staffing model becomes pretty static, your revenues become volatile. So in order to compensate for that difference. You uh, you decouple it from from taxation. Um, mind you, just by happenstance, there's there's a position that's. Has not been filled uh, in the Building and Planning. Uh, and the the urgency to fill that position isn't there because the volume isn't there as well. I just had this conversation with the direct. With the director today. So, you know, we recognize that there's a bit of flexibility there, but it's it's not going to be an objective to, let's say, lay people off if we have staffing during it. During a time of slowing building permits. Did I ask your question?
It it does, thank you. I think it's important for us to to just understand that that ramification. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, just to, uh, I I won't talk in detail about uh, the remaining revenues. I'll I'll just fill in council with, well, what what is this other fees and and permits? And it includes lots of different things, heritage alteration permits, zoning application fees, excuse me, upland citing and design border variance, public hearing fees, so a lot of. Lot of stuff mixed into there. Individually, they're all insignificant, but together, they're they're the budget is approximately $36,000. And we've reduced the budget just in response to um, uh, five-year trends. So the um, now to discuss the operating expenses here, you'll notice that there's a projected increase of 4.6%. Uh, much that, much of that is is due to the animal control contract, which is going up uh, this year by 7.3%. As well as uh, reorganization of 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 planning staff. Now, I think I I probably could have displayed this a a bit more um. Intuitively, uh, prior to this year, the the Planning and Building Department functions weren't really separated this way, right? Planning inspections by law enforcement, animal control. We split it this way this year, again, to give the public intuitively an idea of. Well, what's the work that they're getting done here? And so I had to sort of um. Uh, take the total 2019 budget and split it between the functions. And you see, I I've I've split it rather uniformly. I I I've applied the increase rather uniformly, the 7%, the 7% in it. But in reality, the uh, the um, planning salary increments and the results of the reorganization of the. Um, staffing needs resides mostly in the planning uh, section of this. So don't, don't be um. Fooled, let's say, by uh, by law enforcement. Our by law enforcement costs are almost 100% um, salaries. Salaries there are not really going up 7%. So that concludes uh, building, yep, I'm looking forward to questions.
Council breathway.
Um, thank you. Um, and through you, Chair. So under the animal control, um, the 88,600. That's, I'm assuming, for the salary of the animal control people that we use?
Uh, contracted services.
Yeah, the contracted services, yeah. So then, um, when I look up above as to the dog licenses, the amount of money that we bring in, which is $64,000, and I'm assuming. Animal control would be mainly around dogs and pets, I guess. Um, is, are the tickets that they give out, do we get that revenue, or does that revenue go somewhere else, or? And does that revenue show up under parking and M T I fines?
Through your worship, yeah, the 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 fines would would show up under M T I fines. We also get a bit of, you know, pound revenue that would show up on the other fees and.
So it's, it it's almost an equal, if you add the 64,000 and a 30, then that's 94,300, but. The oh, there's there's parking fines in there as well. So we're actually losing a little bit of money on the on the um, the animal control with that?
The the other fees and permits really includes a whole host of things not related to animal control. I I I would almost um. Completely exclude from your mind the the MTIs and the they're so minimal. Really, yeah, we we are receiving about $64,000 in revenue. We're paying about $89,000. And that's, that's a typical ratio, like a 75% pay for by the user, because the general public does benefit somewhat from animal control services, so. A part of it can can be funded by taxation.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Through you to staff, um, uh, the first first presentation suggested that um. The new short-term rental enforcement um, would result in a 0.19% tax increase, I believe in 2021. Um, I presume that that's not reflected in these numbers. Um, uh, those would be next year's numbers.
Correct.
So then the question I would like to ask is, can you help explain, uh, maybe you or another member of staff, help saying, uh, where does, why would there be a 7% increase? Um, in the operating expense category for building and planning this year, please?
Uh, I'll just scroll to page forty-two. And you'll notice, uh, so this is the reorganization that I was referring to. Planning technician is no longer staffed and funded. Uh, but planner is, which is a higher pay grade, and there's additional funding. And and there's also other uh. Uh, staff members who have moved, who have been moving up on on the increments. We pay in a three, three-scale increment. And I have, um, I have a more detailed breakdown of the total of the total uh, increases here. What I've got is $12,000 for just regular QP increases. To to what the salaries were previously. $15,000 is the increments, as I mentioned, and and the reorganization. Uh, 7K was for the reorganization. 20,000 is benefits. They actually reduced their consulting budget by $10,000. And then 7K was animal control services. When you add all those up together, it equals, you know, uh, the approximately $45,000 difference. Between this and this. So as mentioned, the uh, Director of Planning and Building is here if anybody has any operational questions. Um, otherwise, we we get to the best part of the presentation, which is the P R C budget.
Is there any, uh, is there any questions of uh, Mr. Anderson? Counselor Green, is there a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, just a comment, and I really appreciate the information and how it's broken down. I just wonder again, for the public's benefit. If we could explain what an F T E is, because a lot of people don't know what that means. Um, and so if we could just put full-time equivalent or full-time position, that would be very helpful for the, I think, for the public. And under the section that was, oh, I'm just trying to find it now, I'm sorry. Um. I seem to be on a, oh, yeah, I've got to go back to page forty-five. This is a very challenging task I have here. Um, doing this by conference call, I just want you to know, it's it's hard. When you're technically challenged, too. Um, I think, I think it was other fees and permits. Um, sorry, back to page, um. Is it forty-five or forty-four? Uh, other other fees and permits, would it be possible to just bracket an example or a couple of examples of what those are? Just again, for the clarification for for the public. So these are minor um. Minor issues, but I really, I very much appreciate what what the director has laid out for us. And it's extremely um, important information, but I just think for clarity for the public who are not. Necessarily conversant in these kinds of budgets, um, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. I think footnotes or a little bit of clarification, that kind of thing is always helpful. I noticed that for M T I fines as well. I don't think most people would understand what that is without. A little bit of assistance, so. Uh, Counselor Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much. And again, through you to to staff, I'm just uh, looking at the uh, the billion, billion planning, staffing history and forecasted requests. What page is that on? Forty-three? Um, with the addition of one planner and the reduction of a planning technician, um, uh, so let me preface my question. I recall a couple of years ago. Um, some around this table, oh, dare I say, were promoting the fact that we had no planners. But I'd like to know, how many planners will we have in total uh, at the end of of this process, assuming we approve it?
There'll be three, including myself.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. And I also wanted to ask, um, in looking at the um, at the numbers uh, of expected work in the upcoming year. Uh, which are forecasted less than previous years, and and that's also reflected on the uh, less revenue that's being expected. I just wanted to um, try and reconcile with the potential less work, but the potential more um, cost. Uh, if I could help understand the 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 apparent disconnect between that, please?
If I may, uh, through the chair, I I think the um, the the less work common is related to the the expectation that we'd have fewer building permit. Applications and maybe to make the point that the planning uh, change, the increase is related to not. Building permits, it's related to planning applications and and also the projects and initiatives that we're undertaking. Um, as part of our housing framework, for example.
And if I may, one more follow-up question through you to staff. Um, land use contracts, if I recall correctly, the province has asked us to to get rid of them, or maybe throughout the province, we're supposed to get rid of them. Do we have any left? I I see it's zero for nineteen and in 2020. Just out of curiosity, if there's happens to be any left.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, through the chair, yes, yes, we do have them, and this is related to applications that might be associated with changes to land use contracts. That's what that. That measure is in that um, in that, on that page, in that document. So uh, we we do have existing land use contracts, and as you're correct, they will be phased out. Uh, but this is to reflect whether or not we've had applications to make any changes to land use contracts.
Um, I I much appreciate that, if I may. Um, uh, if I recall correctly, and I could be wrong, that that we had a deadline to get rid of them, along with lots of lots of other local authorities. I'm wondering whether that's been factored in. Uh, or is that beyond the five-year um, timeline? I don't recall exactly when the deadline was.
I don't want to get too far off of the budget focus of this, but I will let the question go.
I believe it does go beyond our our five-year timeframe.
Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you. Um, just a question for staff. When we, in the, we've changed over the years, the metrics we're using for um, analyzing building permits. Um, sometimes we use uh, a dollar figure, and now we're back to the units. But um, when we talk about the number of units in here, we show um. 2019 actual, it's 577. For 2018, it was 791. But when we report actually to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. So that we would do comparatives with other members of the C R D for 2018, our building permits are shown as 55. Could you explain? We have an explanation on on the difference in reporting to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing?
Nobody seems to want to be jumping for the microphone. Mr. Anderson?
I I just will note that um, the the number that you see the uh, in in the document before you is 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 related to all. Building and plumbing permits and they're and they're, so it's broken out, whereas I I'm quite sure that the information we. We give is is just related to building permits for for new builds, for new new structures, in terms of our province. So it's, it wouldn't include the the plumbing permits, for example.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I don't see any of the questions, so back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, your worship. As mentioned, we've now got the most exciting part of the financial plan, which is our Parks Reckon Culture. Finance Department's been very grateful for the partnership with Parks Reckon Culture, um, colleague, uh, Ms. very grateful for the partnership with Parks, Rec and Culture. Um, our colleague, uh, Mrs. Duff is here, and she's going to lead the presentation.
Welcome, Ms. Duff. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't actually, uh, thank the, the, the prior Parks, Rec and Culture Commission, who also had a chance to, uh, review this budget in significant detail, uh, and this, and so this is, represents a look-over by them, and now coming to our table for consideration as well. Uh, welcome, Ms. Duff.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I'm just going to take my glasses off. I don't need them to read, so when I look up at you, I'm not going to be able to see you very well, but I'm going to continue to read from my document. I'm delighted to be here today to present the twenty-twenty budget for Oak Bay Parks, Recreation and Culture. Before I begin discussions regarding the twenty-twenty budget, I have a few housekeeping items to point out. Uh, for some of you here and some at home, you may have reviewed our twenty-twenty provisional budget, which was presented to Commission on November sixth, twenty-nineteen. Various parts of that budget have been restated to conform with the new format of the financial plan. In particular, transfers from reserves and transfers to reserves have been removed from our budget and are presented at the bottom of pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the, along with other internal municipal transfers. The Boulevard taxes, as we already discussed today, um, have been removed from our budget and are now presented in a separate line item on pages twenty-two and twenty-three. Finally, the new budget requests are presented separately and are not included in the department reports on pages forty-six and forty-seven. Um, as explained by the Director of Finance, this is done to increase transparency and allow council to easily identify new budget requests. In addition, it better articulates the cost of our core budget, that which is required to maintain the status quo, plus the cost of forced growth. And I'll also reiterate that the, we define forced growth as those costs which are not discretionary, such as collective agreement wage increases and rate increases from suppliers. Subsequent to the November sixth meeting, we had made some changes to our budget requests, and I will go into more detail on those later in my presentation. Other than the changes that I have just noted, our core budget remains unchanged from the budget presented in November. The second housekeeping item, um, with the changes in our twenty-twenty budget process, amendments to our fees and charges will now be approved via bylaw in a separate meeting. In future years, staff will present the fees and charges amendments to council annually and prior to the year in which they apply. Um, in, in our, uh, meeting of November sixth, uh, we, staff recommended no increase in general admission fees and an increase of approximately two percent in program fees and facility rentals for twenty-twenty. One of the tools used to set fees and charges is the competitive, the comparative report that staff compiles, which lists the fees and charges of eleven local municipalities. This report, program attendance and market conditions are all considered by staff before it makes its recommendation to council. As a reminder, the objective of council is to ensure that recreation user fee revenue covers all direct program costs and ma- maximizes, uh, coverage for fixed overhead costs. You'll note in, um, our bullet page that overall financial recovery rates for Oak Bay Parks, Recreation and Culture, uh, are at approximately seventy percent for each of the last two years. The third and final housekeeping note is that I would like to bring your attention to the correction in the reporting of our full-time equivalent information. It's, uh, mentioned briefly on page nine and also on page forty-five of the financial plan. Oak Bay Parks, Recreation and Culture is the largest employer of auxiliary staff within the organization. In twenty-nineteen, auxiliary hours translated into full-time equivalent or FTEs of seventy-eight point six employees, while permanent full-time, part-time staff translated into a full-time equivalent of seventy point six employees, for a total full-time equivalent of a hundred and forty-nine point two-two for twenty-nineteen year. The comparable FTE for twenty-eighteen was a hundred and forty-five point three-four employees. In our new budget requests, staff are recommending the addition of point seven-eight of an FTE, which will be discussed in more detail later in this presentation. This would bring the calculated FTE for twenty-twenty to one hundred and fifty staff. We will update the next version of the financial plan with these numbers, and they'll be reflected on pages nine and forty-five. So with that, I would like to proceed to the presentation of the twenty-twenty budget. As a way of overview, I would, I will begin my discussion on page forty-five with a review of the twenty-nineteen accomplishments and some of our plans for twenty-twenty. I will then refer to our department reports on pages forty-six and forty-seven to discuss revenues and expenditures, and finally, I will wrap up with the discussion of our new budget requests. As noted by the Director of Finance, recreation capital requests are deferred to the meeting being held on March twelfth. To begin, I'm happy to report on the following twenty-nineteen accomplishments. In twenty-nineteen, we began tracking total visits and are pleased to report that we had approximately one million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand visits in twenty-nineteen. The number includes attendance at programs, drop-in visits, and attendance through rentals of our facilities and our park spaces. We completed the Recreation Center Energy Recovery Project and were able to see immediate benefits and reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. On February fifth, we received our fourth quarter energy report, which disclosed a sixty percent reduction in natural gas consumption and a reduction of eighty tons of gas house, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. While we know that there are many factors that influence our energy consumption, we can speculate that some of the sixteen thousand dollars in savings in that quarter was related to this project. We completed the Bowker Creek mural named Parade of Play, which beautifies the corridor and symbolizes our vibrant and active community. We completed the Canarvin Park Master Plan, which is meant to provide a long-range vision and plan to serve the community over the next twenty to thirty years. And we successfully applied for the grant to support restoration of critical habitat for fourteen at-risk species in Uplands Park. Oak Bay will receive financial support in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand over a three-year period. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge how fortunate Oak Bay Recreation is to have such a strong volunteer base. In particular, Monterey Recreation Activity Association, the Friends of Uplands Park, and the many community volunteers who demonstrate a strong commitment and interest in maintaining our natural areas. In twenty-twenty, with the approval of council, we will initiate the design phase of the Canarvin Park Master Plan, which will include developing the conceptual design for the new fieldhouse and the development of architectural renderings to be used in our tender documents. We will complete a revision of our tree bylaw, which will further protect our urban forest. And we will undertake major upgrades and repairs to Oak Bay Recreation Center, including replacing the pool roof and replacing a step-down in, uh, transformer. As noted earlier on page forty-five, I will bring your attention to the bottom of the page, uh, where we will correct the FTE presentation. After the correction, this section will read one hundred and forty-nine point two-two FTEs in twenty-nineteen and one hundred and fifty FTEs for twenty-twenty. So now I'd like to, uh, move on to the revenue page, page forty-six. Um, Oak Bay Parks, Recreation and Culture revenue is comprised of program fees, rental revenues, permit fees, food sales, cost recoveries, grants and donation. In developing estimates, staff must consider fee increases, exception in events or attendance, program popularity, historical revenue trends, status of competitive markets, facility capacity, service level targets, and program changes. This is why you will notice that our revenue budget is not a simple increase of two percent. Each program is considered in detail, and our budget is built based on a specific expectation for the coming year. And just a quick note on this page, um, there's a clerical error at the bottom, uh, which I'll bring your attention to. The total revenue number for twenty-twenty should read eight million nine-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Uh, you can see that we are estimating a six point two percent or five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase in revenue over the twenty-nineteen budget. The twenty-twenty revenue is budgeted to hit the same heights as the twenty-nineteen actual revenue within about forty-one thousand. I will now point out just some of the highlights on that revenue page. In aquatics, you may notice that the department did very well in twenty-nineteen as compared to the twenty-nineteen budget. For twenty-twenty, we anticipate strong demand for services will continue, and as such, have added the increased service, service levels into the budget. The one point eight million rev, in revenue incorporates the increased demand for programs, the two percent fee increase, and the expanded hours which occur in years alternate to the pool shutdown year. For indoor sports field, there was great demand in twenty-nineteen. It was particularly popular for birthday parties and clubs throughout the entire year. The demand for this venue is expected to continue in twenty-twenty. In tennis, private lessons have done very well in twenty-nineteen. Our coaches are in demand and have created a steady following, which is expected to continue in twenty-twenty. Reception sales have steadily increased along with the rise in program attendance. Sales of swimsuits, water bottles, and other sundry items continue to be strong, and we have budgeted for that to carry on in twenty-twenty. Uh, field and parks, that should read field and parks revenue and not just permits. It includes permit fees, bench donations, forfeited tree bonds, boulevard recoveries, and not taxes, that's actual recoveries, and, uh, tree grant, uh, Tree Canada grants. As a best practice, we generally do not budget for, uh, donations. Uh, in, in twenty-twenty, however, we did budget to recognize some of the donations which had been received and deferred for the long-term bench maintenance program. So that's the difference, uh, year over year there. The grant for the Habitat Stewardship Program for Species at Risk, referred to as the HSP Grant, was not in our twenty-nineteen budget because we do not budget for grants in the year of application. However, we were successful in our application for the grant, and as a result, we included, um, year two of the grant funds in twenty-twenty, uh, less the holdback. And that's the summary of revenue, and I would like to turn to the expenditure page. Thank you. Um, before I discuss the individual expense lines, I would like to address the change in total expenditures between twenty-nineteen forecast and twenty-twenty budget. If we look midway down the page, we see total expenditures for the twenty-nineteen forecast is twelve million nine hundred and forty-four three oh nine, and we see total expenditures for the twenty-twenty budget is at thirteen million five ninety-eight six hundred. Much like our revenue stream, our expenses are impacted by many factors. I would like to draw a straight line between the twenty-nineteen forecast and the twenty-twenty budget. The difference between the twenty-nineteen forecast and the twenty-twenty budget is approximately six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars or a five point one percent increase. The difference is comprised of the following. One hundred and ninety-four thousand of the six fifty-four can be explained as savings from net vacancies. When creating the twenty-twenty budget, best practice is to include the full cost of all permanent full-time, part-time positions. The one hundred and ninety-four thousand represents the net wage saving in twenty-nineteen after considering the use of auxiliary staff to backfill where possible. There were vacancies in all departments in twenty-nineteen, including the, an exempt position that was not backfilled. This amounts to a two percent savings on total wage expense in twenty-nineteen. Because we cannot forecast vacancies with a great degree of accuracy, the twenty-nineteen saving, savings have not been incorporated into your twenty-twenty budget. The next reconciling item is three hundred and three thousand in forced growth for wages and benefits. Starting with the twenty-nineteen budget, budgeted wages, we then add increased, um, increases indicated in our collective agreement, uh, and planned wage step-ups for existing staff, and then we add the calculated benefits. This represents three point two percent increase over the twenty-nineteen budget. Next, we include eighty-seven thousand for planned service level changes. As noted, operating hours for the aquatic programs will increase in twenty-twenty because there's no pool shutdown for maintenance in the year. Other programs also have planned service level increases for twenty-twenty. These increases are complemented by an increase in revenue. Finally, we have approximately seventy, seventy-two thousand in forced growth from suppliers. This cost includes increases from suppliers in expenses, in, sorry, in expenses such as utilities, insurance premiums, consultants, and credit card fees. The cost of forced growth on total expenses is two percent of the twenty-nineteen budget. With that, I will point out, um, highlights in the expenditures. So beginning with the administration expenditures, we can see a reduction of five point one percent in twenty-twenty. However, this is due to the elimination of a clerical, clerical error. The twenty-nineteen budget included a duplicate expense for the value of the employer health tax, and when we isolate this adjustment in twenty-twenty, it reveals that administration expenses have actually increased by two point nine percent or sixty-three thousand in twenty-twenty. This increase is comprised of forced growth with credit card fees, insurance premiums, and wage rate increases. In the program areas, specifically in aquatics, indoor sports field, and tennis, each have planned increases in wages and program expenses related to the anticipated increases in service levels. In addition, expenditures include forced growth factors such as collective agreement wage increases, wage step-ups, and supplier rate changes. The invasive species removal expense have increased due to the proposed workload for twenty-twenty, and they also include forced growth factors. Finally, bench refurbishment expenses have increased due to planned repairs and forced growth factors. Um, with that, I would now like to move on to our new budget requests, which are located at the bottom of page forty-seven and described in detail on page forty-eight. Uh, the first request is related to our access and inclusion initiative. Recent changes in the provision of services in the region have prompted an increased need for support services for persons with disabilities. Staff recommend an increase in auxiliary hours to meet these needs and provide additional support for persons with disabilities. The addition of six hundred and twenty auxiliary hours will enable staff to provide support services to adults and children participating in community recreation, as well as children attending after-school care programs and summer camps. This initiative, oh, excuse me, began in twenty-nineteen with the addition of two hundred and eighty-nine hours, and the twenty-twenty increase will see support hours rise to nine hundred and twelve hours. Next is our reduction in single lifeguard swim sessions. Staff recommend an increase of five hundred and fifteen auxiliary hours to reduce the number of single lifeguard sessions. As budget allows, the aquatic team has been working toward a higher standard of care in our public swim sessions. With the approval of this request, the remaining single lifeguard hours will be reduced to eight hundred and sixty-six annually, which is down from a starting point of two hundred, uh, two thousand nine hundred and thirty hours in twenty-sixteen.
Ms. Duff, I think, now that you're into the, into the, sort of the meat of the report that we, we should have read.
Yeah.
Uh, I think I'll probably just not have you read that, and I'll just, I'll, I'll take questions from the, from the committee.
Oh, yeah, sure, no problem.
Um, just in the interest of time and, and, this is, so, uh, it probably, I'm sure very helpful for people at home, and I certainly encourage everyone to read the notes, because I think they're incredibly important.
Okay.
But, yeah, Counselor Ne.
Um, just a, uh, a small point. Just generally speaking, um, I, it's very impressive, uh, the way this facility is being run and managed, and, I mean, the financial recovery rate is upstanding. I mean, at you and, and that, you should all be very proud. I mean, it, it's not just the numbers economically, but it's just a good place to go. It's really good service. And what I always like here is that you seem to be able to so, be so responsive to what the community keeps wanting. There's so much adaptation always going on here with these programs, so thank you for that. Um, the, um, the, the big one that's standing out for me are the benches. Now, I was just wondering if you could help me understand what happened. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is a big shift in terms of what's happened. Help me understand what happened there.
Ms. Duff?
Uh, yes, so are you talking about the bench revenues? Oh, sorry, through your chair? The expenses are, um, variable. Uh, so we, uh, the way the, the bench program works is that we get, uh, one-time donations often for a bench, and we'll put in the work to, to install that bench. Um, and then we also get maintenance dollars. Uh, so, so the revenue and the expense, expenses related to bench, uh, maintenance and repair will change from year to year based on that variability. I believe that's an accurate, uh, representation. Does that sound right to you? Yeah, so, so it will vary, so the, so we do take a concerted look at what we expect to happen in the next year, and it won't necessarily follow what has already happened.
Counselor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship. Through you to staff, um, my question just pertains to, um, the tree risk reduction component of the urban forest management strategy, and this proposes, uh, adding in sort of a cyclical review of, of tree risk done by neighborhoods on an annual basis, and I'm just kind of wondering how this compares to, uh, that department's ongoing monitoring of trees that, that already occurs. Um, because I, I get the sense that there's already a, potentially a neighborhood-by-neighborhood review of municipal trees in any case, so is this, I, if, if I read this correctly, this is an exp- So is this, I, if, if I read this correctly, this is an expansion of that program to specifically deal with trees, uh, at risk because there is a greater exigency because we're seeing more trees in that category? Am I getting that right?
Uh, Mr. Hadley?
Uh, through, through the chair, thanks, uh, Counsel, Counselor Appleton. Uh, what we've done, it, it's mainly to meet our, our duty of care. So the, the bulk of our program, or 10 months of our program, it really is just, uh, service call-based. Uh, this allows us to, uh, respond to more, more, let's say, critical pruning of trees that we wouldn't usually get to. So, uh, the trees are inspected and pruned and looked at, uh, more thoroughly than they would be just on, on a call-for-service basis. So we started it this year, um, uh, with our crew, uh, supplementing some contract crews, just working through a good portion of the uplands. So things are done a lot more thoroughly, and, uh, things are, are documented more thoroughly than they are just with a call-for-service. So it really is just, uh, reflects, uh, a higher, uh, level of care.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, uh, related to these items? I just, uh, would just express my, again, my appreciation for this level of detail. Uh, the, um, I also just want to, I, I was going through and comparing past dates, and I, I do appreciate the efforts to reconcile the total cost for the different, uh, aspects of this. I know, I just, I had, I raised a question offline about why the, the cost for, say, golf had gone up over, say, 2018, and it reflects just trying to reconcile all the, all the relative costs attached. And I, I think from a policy level, which is where we're at, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really great way for us to do our planning piece, um, recognize there's no perfect measure. But I do appreciate the efforts by staff to kind of, uh, think through those little details to help us make good policy decisions, so thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Breathwaite?
Um, thank you, and through you, Chair. Um, I just want to reiterate, um, how proud I am of our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department. We're the pride of all of British Columbia, and it's all because of, uh, the staff that we have, um, and the volunteers that we have that, uh, that work with you for everything that you do and everything that you're able to produce, um, for us to attend and the programs, et cetera. So, so kudos to you guys for, for making us really, truly the pride of British Columbia, so thank you.
Uh, is there any other questions? So I think, is there anybody from the audience who wish, oh, Counselor Green?
Oh, sorry, I, I just wanted to echo the comments of others that I think we should be incredibly proud of this, this group and the whole Parks and Recreation team. Uh, it's terrific, and I'm very happy to see under the new operating budget request the support for inclusion and access initiatives. I think that's a really important one, and I, I commend the staff for including that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you. I think that's, anybody from the audience wishes to come forward? Seeing anyone wanting to come forward to ask questions this time. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for answering all the questions. Mr. Herman, Mr. Meekle, you got it very easily tonight, yes.
Uh, your worship, I just would let you know that we met on Monday to prepare for this, and by a 3-1 decision, I was asked not to speak.
Who is the one? All right, Mr. Uh, Mr. Payne, I believe we're back to you to introduce the engineering services. And if, I think if Parks, Recreation, and Culture wishes to leave, you're, you're more than welcome to do so. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, the next and final phase of the, uh, operating budget review for today will be the engineering and public, uh, works review. Uh, we've, uh, sort of divided engineering and public works into various divisions, but it's, it's one department, which is why we're going to discuss it as such. The utilities, um, utilities are separated more for financial reasons. I'm going to start out very briefly by, uh, chatting about the engineering operating budget, and, uh, then Mr. Haran has prepared some comments in regards to, uh, the, uh, the recommended staffing increases, and we will continue to discuss the public works division, um, of the engineering and public works department and water utility and sewer utility. So just to touch again on, on a couple, uh, pardon me, I'm looking at my computer when I should be looking at this one. Here we go. So just to touch on a couple of the many accomplishments, uh, from this department last year, uh, water master plan was completed. There was significant progress made on the LED streetlight project, which continues into 2020. Um, significant project on ver, on various water main replacements, which is expected to, uh, increase, uh, some traffic calming and some securing of funding from ICBC for, uh, road improvement at approximately $100,000. In 2020, they want to continue to, uh, roll out the LED street, uh, light program, uh, begin to develop a sewer, uh, master plan, and, uh, and complete another, um, uh, uh, plethora of asset management-related, uh, projects such as the five-year sanitary sewer, 10-year storm sewer, CCTV condition assessments. Looking forward to that. So the operating budget of, uh, the engineering division of the, uh, Engineering and Public Works Department, pretty, pretty simple, uh, here, 1.6%, all, all forced growth. Um, where the, the meat of, uh, the increase besides that is the operating budget, uh, recommendations for additional staffing. So I'm going to invite, uh, Director Haran to, um, provide some comments related to that. Thank you.
And just before Mr. Haran does start, I, I, I publicly welcomed Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff to leave once they were done their presentation. Mr. Anderson, you've done yours as well. If you wish to leave, of course, you're welcome to at any time. No way to feel like you're trapped in the corner there if you, if you don't want to stick around. You're welcome to stay, of course, if you wish, but, uh, Mr. Haran, over to you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, uh, I just have a, a couple of comments to make, um, a minute or two here. Uh, the, as we look at the operating budgets, we really do consider the department to be one department. So as you, budgeting-wise, you have engineering services, public works, the water and sewer utility, uh, all one department, and, and many individuals within the department funded from multiple different sources. So, uh, there's approximately 45 people in engineering services with myself as the director, and David Brozick, who's to my left, uh, the superintendent of public works, uh, as a direct report to me, and then five in engineering, all also, uh, direct reports to me. So, uh, the comments I have just cover all of the, uh, the program that fits in engineering services, uh, and so when, when I'm done, then we can go into the details about the different specific operating budgets as the questions, uh, come up. So what we've provided in this financial plan is the foundation of how engineering services can, uh, deliver on this council and this community's expectations now and in the, in the coming years. The demand signal for engineering services output has increased significantly since 2013. And, and since that time in engineering and in public works, uh, we have responded to that demand signal by doing more, delivering more results than we have before that time. So the output in 2013 for engineering and public works compared to now means there's been significant growth in the amount that we're doing year to year, um, with no real shift or change in the size of the department since that time. Community expectations have increased in terms of active transportation, uh, safety of roads and sidewalk, engagement and community connection via email, letters, face-to-face, and just expectations for customer service have increased in that time. Uh, the asset management program has increased the need to do better and more in terms of planning, design, decision-making, risk management, contract administration, and construction oversight in that time. Some outstanding first steps occurred between 2017 and 2019, including, uh, an asset management program, strategy, and a policy. Funding increases, significant ones, uh, to, to infrastructure reserve and capital planning with sustainable infrastructure, um, funding within sight. These are success stories, and, um, they're the right difficult decisions that have been made up till now. The question is, um, how best to build on those necessary, difficult, uh, but foundational steps? So how to turn these high-level financing, infrastructure, risk management, and government, governance decisions into new water, sewer, and storm pipes, new roads, meters, valves, pump stations, sidewalks, and safer streets? Uh, and how to do that in a way that's affordable, uh, sustainable, and responsible to deliver that clean water, a protected environment, and safer streets for decades to come? So the first thing is, we need to address the gaps in maintenance when it comes to water and wastewater. So we've reached a tipping point where we are now more reactive, responsive to things that break rather than responsible, planned, and deliberate about our preventative maintenance work. Uh, so when we look at, did we meet our preventative maintenance minimum goals in a particular year in this year? Did we refurbish the right number of hydrants, valves, meters last year? Or did we spend too much time reacting to water leaks, uh, and water main breaks? Uh, did we spend the right amount of time flushing and cleaning sewer lines? Or did we spend a disproportionate amount of our time reacting to sewer backups each times, each time it rains? So this gap in preventative and corrective maintenance, the, the ratio between those two um, is, is why, that this, this, this skewed gap between, or skewed ratio between those two is why we're proposing as a minimum of four additional maintenance workers, one storm and sewer maintenance worker, two waterworks maintainers, and a foreman to supervise those three new full-time equivalents, plus the five exists, is existing people in that department. Um, so for, uh, three and a half out of those four, uh, positions have already been funded, uh, through the water and sewer budgets that were approved back in November, and then in this budget that we're looking at now, there's half of a, a full-time equivalent, uh, that, that, uh, funding is required. So next, major capital project delivery. We are currently, uh, engineering services at the limit of what we can provide in terms of our own forces and contracted-out capital works. So sewer main replacements, uh, sewer and storm, uh, and water is what I'm trying to say there. Um, so our planning horizon traditionally in, uh, in this department in the past, say, 10 years has been two or three months out from the beginning, beginning of a project is when the planning and the engineering and the, and the work would be done to deliver that project. Um, we've succeeded in the last two years to stretch that planning horizon out to six months, but we can't do any better, uh, without a drop in levels of service in other areas. For us to deliver the capital improvement plan that we need to do to, to achieve our asset management goals, we need to be two or three years out in terms of our planning and our, uh, engineering design and, and, uh, contract risk management. So what that means is, we will have currently in place plans to, we have delivered a water master plan in the future, a sewer master plan, a storm water master plan, transportation, natural asset master plans, but we're going to have a real struggle. Uh, in fact, I would argue, um, just a very, very, uh, difficult time at all to be able to turn any of those plans into real infrastructure renewal. Next, we need to modernize how we do our business. So how do we increase our accountability while delivering services in accordance with industry best practices? Um, some of what we do and some of what we can do, what we must do, involves getting better at service delivery, so doing more with the current resources we have, and there, there are some improvements that, that can and should be made there. Um, but also, uh, to respond to the demand signal that's in place right now and what the future holds, uh, it involves some growth. Uh, and then after four years in this job, uh, relatively conservative, uh, approach that I take in terms of, uh, recommendations around FTEs, around full-time equivalents, and growth of departments in a local government context, uh, our recommendation at this time, uh, is, uh, is what's reflected in this financial plan. Finally, is, uh, and I'm almost done my, uh, my, my few minutes here, is the unfunded liability, which is the unmanaged risk to service delivery. And what I'm referring to is, in 2016, uh, the Moore Architects Facilities Report that was provided, that everyone saw and read and understood, uh, captured the, the, all of the facilities that the municipality owns and the, the need to replace those on an asset management kind of approach, and then the operations and maintenance funds that are required to keep those facilities operating indefinitely going forward. So there's critical work to be done, but there are still unanswered questions about that work. How long will the current facilities last? Can we extend the life of the current facilities that we're using? And what investments need to be made to extend the lives of those facilities? A facilities master plan has been incorporated into the asset management program, but there is no, uh, necessarily place where that task belongs in terms of any of the directors in, in the department. So no director at this time in the department as it's set up has the capacity to take on this task as a secondary duty or even as a primary duty. It is a $16.4 million program for just the high-priority buildings, the six high-priority buildings, plus $400,000 in operations and maintenance costs to maintain those buildings. This is an unfunded, um, program with, uh, and the need exists. So the impact of failure here is, uh, potentially more expensive than necessary, uh, repairs and upgrades to facilities if they're left too long, uh, forced decrease in levels of service as facilities can't handle the needs, uh, and health and safety risks as mandatory cha, uh, which would require mandatory changes or mandatory upgrades in the future, again, more expensive than, um, deliberate, uh, upgrades. How to address this? Um, make staff accountable for results in this area, but resource staff appropriately to deliver on those needs. So that's where the position of, uh, infrastructure asset manager and facilities manager, uh, is, uh, is proposed, and that position is intended to, to report directly to me, but to be responsive to all the chiefs and the, uh, to the chiefs and all the directors to deliver on that capital program and that operational program related to, uh, to facilities. That is what I had to say to introduce, to intro. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Uh, very much appreciate the overview provided. Uh, are there questions of, yes, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to staff. Um, I thank Mr. Haran for his presentation. I certainly appreciate, um, the work he has done since, since he came to work for the district and the continuing work that he, he does. Um, I am just wondering, um, in this marketplace, and I know that it's, it's, it's been challenging to find employees, but, um, in this marketplace, in your opinion, is it possible to consider any of these, um, either of these positions on, um, on a basis of a three-to-five-year contract as a, in, in, rather than, um, hiring on full-time until more is known about the asset management program and the facilities management program, and you have a, um, a, a better long-term understanding of it? Or is it, is it just too difficult to find, you know, employees, contract employees in this marketplace right now?
Mr. Haran?
Uh, through the chair, just a, a clarification question. Uh, do you mean for, uh, because I didn't really mention in my introduction the, uh, the manager of engineering position? So there's the two, the two exempt positions that we're talking about, the manager of engineering and then the infrastructure asset management slash facilities manager. Is the question related to both of those positions or just, just the one?
Well, I, I, you know, I think that the, um, the asset management, you're, you're fairly advanced down the road, but certainly the facilities management, because we, we don't really have the plans right now for buildings, and so I'm, I'm just wondering, um, once we get more into understanding what is required, perhaps the skills of the person that might be required to carry that forward will change from the onset. So that's why I'm just thinking in terms of a, of a, perhaps a, a, a contract employee to get that program, um, identified, established, and know what the longer-term goals are.
Mr. Haran?
Um, through the chair, I don't know enough about the, uh, the, the market in terms of skilled, um, individuals, uh, in terms of contracted-at-work. Uh, I can say that, um, the, the intention in terms of this position, it really does fall into that category of, of, uh, the, the, a lot of the work that you would see as a council and the public would see would be very similar to what you're seeing already in terms of the kinds of, the, the reporting and the responsiveness to the council that you see at this table in terms of, uh, taking strategic intent, bringing reports forward. And, and a lot of them are, are, are simple things like, um, so first concepts of buildings or replacements, but then, uh, things like, um, uh, requests for proposals and tenders and, and just the practical aspects of, of managing, uh, renovations or, or upgrades or, or those kinds of activities. So a lot of that is, it, it, it could be done, potentially, um, but, uh, I think there's a enough expected work around the high-priority buildings alone in the next five to 10 years that, that we, we expect that, uh, that anyone who is skilled and qualified to fill this position would be, uh, would be more than busy. In fact, we would, we would probably say part of that job description is around laying out what further resources are required to deliver those services in the future. And some of those might be better suited to be, um, contracted out. But I think as a core function, uh, we really do believe that the municipality needs a staffer who has the skills and experience and is accountable to the, to the council and the community to deliver that function.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. We have Counselor Breathwaite and Appleton.
Um, thank you, and, and mine's just actually, uh, just a clarification. On the bottom of page 49, where it says staffing history and forecast, I'm wondering if under the 2020 FTEs, it should actually say 11.5 and under change, it should say 2? Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Breathwaite, Counselor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship through you to staff. I just, I have a couple of questions, and it's a bit of an extension from what Counselor Patterson was just speaking about with regards to the facilities manager position. Uh, and obviously, our, our analysis of what's going to be required for facilities management is based on, in great part, on the facilities management plan that the director referred to to that we had done some years ago. And I'm just wondering, is it the role of this prospective facilities management person to take up some of, well, of course, the implementation or the response to what's in that plan? But I guess what I'm asking is, is there going to be potentially a savings on consulting fees to have this sort of thing analyzed in subsequent years? And are, should, if not, should we also be anticipating that there needs to be a significant update to that facilities management plan that we already have in order to support the work of this proposed individual, just so we can get a sense of what the total, and it's not as easy as that, I understand, but the total cost around facilities management for the next couple of years?
Mr. Haran?
Through the chair, I think the big challenge here is if the district has to go the route of depending on consultants to deliver this function, to help the council make decisions about facilities, make decisions about budgets and make decisions about managing risk around service delivery levels and health and safety and sustainability of facilities, it's certainly a route that can be taken, but it's very difficult to, to find a way to work with consultants close enough to be able to have them be responsive to us as a customer without having a demand on our own resources as it is right now. And I think that that's the key, the core message of staff's recommendation around this position is around the idea that the more associates report came out, sorry, it's more architects, it's a firm that doesn't exist anymore, but more architects, I keep saying associates. It came out in 2016 and it was a significant, you know, body of work that had a lot of information in it and it came out at around the same time as the OPUS report around underground infrastructure. Well, we made a ton of progress in underground infrastructure and roads and so on, because I was able to focus on that as a higher priority. The facilities, it was a group effort where we met as a working group to try to move, move that project along, but the reason why it's taking so long for us to get back to this point is because it's not the kind of work that can be done just off the corner of a desk, even if the idea was to try to get consultants to lend some support. So we really struggle with trying to find time for anyone to really focus on this work properly and in looking at what happens in some of other municipalities that we can model off of, this is, this is an approach that may work. There will be for sure requirements in the future for consultants to come in to do specialized work, but the work of being a local government leader and providing the service delivery and the kinds of information that you as a council will need to make tough decisions in the future, we're asking for this resource so that you can have the same kind of service delivery that you get from the team that you see in front of us at this time, in front of you at this time.
And thank you for that, through the, through the chair. And that's clear to me, I guess, sort of, and maybe I wasn't totally clear, but I guess what I'm asking is, what I understand by your comments is, is that there essentially is somewhat of a savings to be had. Either this work is, the analysis of facilities is going to have to be done again in the future, either through consultants or internally. The internal person, aside from providing the benefits that you're describing here, which I understand, does potentially save on the side of, if we were wanting facilities work to be advanced, it's either going to be done by one or the other, but we're saving on having to, on consulting fees by having this person and their expertise.
Through the chair, I think the answer is yes to that question and the answer is also in, not necessarily in terms of saving money, but in the community getting what the community needs, the approach that we're proposing is, is what is probably the better route to get there. Because that, an individual that is accountable to you, not just in terms of contractual relationship, but an actual employee of the municipality that's hired specifically to perform this function, is now responsive to changing needs, is accountable to the community in terms of things like public engagement. So even just the idea of having, which will absolutely be necessary for things like even prioritizing which municipal facilities would need to be replaced first, that, that activity is something that we would struggle with trying to organize and support without a drop in level of service somewhere else in terms of other departments. So this is, this is another great example of not necessarily a pure dollars cost, but in terms of a levels of service cost and a customer service satisfaction with the municipality's work in this area.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Appleton.
Thank you for your indulgence. Thank you, Chair. Just another question related to this position and related to the discussion around, I guess, in oversimplifying, how much work will this person have, five, 10, 15 and 20 years down the road? I'm just wondering whether, Mr. Haran, you might comment on the, potentially the transition of the ability of this person to also address other facilities outside of what's strictly defined as buildings? Because I'm thinking ahead to things like our adaptation to sea level rise and facilities that, you know, things like seawalls and, and outfall structures and other things which are ancillary to municipal operations, which we don't spend a lot of time directly thinking about. We have our sea level rise study. I'm just wondering whether facilities could also be broadly interpreted in this sense to include components of municipal infrastructure like that?
Mr. Haran?
Through the chair, that's exactly what's contemplated and if you, if you look at the report that I wrote that has a bit of the bullet points about what the expectations are, there's one, it's one single bullet point, but it kind of reflects that idea and it's take over the planning and delivery of medium to long-term, so three to 10-year window, engineering services, asset management plans and capital improvement plans. So it's not explicitly said there, but part of the, the idea is with a manager of engineering dealing with the short term, so the one to two-year capital project planning and delivery aspect, and then the asset management planning in terms of what are, so basically management and upkeep of those master plans and our capital improvement plans in all the areas of assets that we, that we're responsible for, including natural assets and facilities and the, all the underground assets and the roads. And at the moment, we don't have, we can have, we will need to go out to contractors to have those master plans done for us and they'll be delivered as a product, but so that they don't end up being a stack of papers and a computer model that sits collecting dust, there needs to be consistent work year to year to turn those longer-term plans into a pipeline that provides the shorter-term planning, the one to two-year planning, work to start getting ready to deliver in the next year or two. My intention is to have this person taking on some of those other natural assets, environmental aspects, things that we're just not, we don't have the capacity to deal with, but it really depends, I think, the advantage of having a broader job description is there's some flexibility. I think there's likely enough work in the, in the initial period of time with just facilities to, to keep that person busy, but if there's capacity in going forward or once we get organized, that we can shift to longer-term asset management planning.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. Thank you, next, Councilor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to Director of Engineering. Excellent report and thank you also Director of Finance. The way it's been put together is, it's incredibly easy to understand. I only have one or two brief questions. The, I appreciate the discussion around the manager of facilities and, and I noticed in your report, the title, for infrastructure asset manager, is another title essentially applied to the same position? You may have answered this already, but maybe I just need it in different words. The impression I get is that facilities management is really focused just on the buildings, but infrastructure asset manager would potentially be a wider or purview in terms of the job description, I believe. If you could just confirm that for me and then give me an idea, a bit more of the difference between those two titles, please.
Through the chair, thank you for the question and I apologize for the confusion. In staff-wise internally, as we discussed, preparing for the budget, we almost got to the point where we're using a short form of the, you know, calling it a facilities manager and that term made it into the initial reports, you know, committed the hole in January and then the financial plan documents, which when we first talked about it in this room two weeks ago, I realized that we didn't anticipate the confusion around the position and it took me by surprise a little bit, actually. So part of the, the report that I provided for this meeting was, was meant to clarify some of that confusion. So a better term for the two positions is, the first one is manager of engineering, which I think is easier to understand and easier to, to kind of grasp what that person's role would be within the current, what we do now. The other position, I had to find a term to better describe it and didn't come up with a perfect one, but infrastructure asset management slash facilities management. So there's a role around owning the facilities master plan and owning the project delivery, at least in terms of the initial few years, project delivery around upgrading those facilities and prioritizing those. In addition, similar to Counselor Appleton's question, the, the aspects of longer-term asset management, not just in facilities, but broadly, is meant to be assigned to that person's role. And I think that based on the realities at the time, it's difficult to predict two years from now exactly what the balance of loads would be, but I anticipate potentially things like, depending on the individuals in the positions, if this is what's supported and we do going forward, that I would have the flexibility to say a transportation can be one of those persons' role and then all underground infrastructure could be the others and facilities would stay with the, the initial position that's related to facilities management, but there's a little bit of flexibility around longer-term asset management planning. That's the intention around these positions and my apologies again for the confusion on the job title.
If I may continue, no, the confusion is mine. It's very clear in the report, I just wanted to hear it with my own ears from, directly from, from your end. The, the piece that, that actually pleases me very much is, is the fact that the position has been made a little more general and I think I even heard you say that it may even potentially, at some point, depending on where we go, potentially even address the natural assets as well, which I think with a title like this would give, give you enough leeway to, to allow those managed, those assets to be managed as well. The other, only other question I have is, I don't know, I feel like I've missed something and maybe I have, but I've heard that this water master plan has been completed for a while now? Has it been presented to council or, I'm, I'm just curious about it. I'm, I know the water commissioner, I like water, if it's there, I want to see it, you know, those sort of things.
Mr. Haran?
Through the chair, it has not and I think this is a great example of one of these things that I would love to do and I just haven't had the time or the capacity to bring it forward in a way that I can show you what, what it says. I can say that absolutely it's an excellent product and it has definitely informed the two to three-year capital planning in the water side that we intend to do for the next few years, because there's a handful of larger projects that, that we didn't necessarily have on our radars as things to do, but now with some flexibility around knowing that they're coming, we can, we can come up with a good capital improvement plans to make that happen. My intention is still to bring that forward to you, mostly later in the year when I, when we start giving some details in terms of this financial plan talks about transfer to reserves and how much capital expenditures are expected, but I think that it's difficult to have the capacity to do this now, but the expectation going forward is that you will have from engineering services, a bit of an outline of what this year's plan is and what next year's plan is in terms of actual work that's going to get done rather than just funding levels. That's, that's where we're aiming for in terms of, from the governance level, I think that that should be an expectation that you should have.
Thank you very much for that answer. I will stop searching the website and the document store for, for this document and I look forward to it coming to council to find out about all the nuance and how that's going to roll out into the actual asset improvements and infrastructures changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. I think I have Counselor Patterson and I think Counselor Green was also maybe making some noise there, so I'll go to her next after Counselor Patterson, if there's any other questions. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I do have a bit of an understanding of the, the gap in infrastructure funding required, so I don't really doubt that we will have many years of, of work for individuals, but, and I thank Mr. Haran for, for trying to outline in more detail for members of council, council and, and members of the public who are reading along some of the expectations of these positions that he is recommending. One thing that I did catch my eye that I, I don't know much about and I was wondering if we could briefly have an explanation, where it said modernized practices to comply with engineers and geoscientists, BCS organization quality management standard because of professional governance act changes that might be introduced in the next two years? Could you just perhaps have a brief explanation of what that translates into?
Mr. Haran?
Yes, through the chair. In short, two years ago, the provincial government announced, created a position and announced a program to do, to review governance of professions that have to do with natural resources and that's what resulted in the professional governance act. And in the past two years, there's been consultation with the various organizations, including engineers and geoscientists BC around what that might mean and a lot of change in terms of what was initially thought and what was expected. Engineers and geoscientists BC has a program where up till now, it's usually been, not always, but often consulting firms, engineering firms that provide services to the public can get what's called an organizational quality management review and then they can use that as a, as a branding in their, in their letterhead and so on and it shows that they have met a certain professional standard. So what's probably going to happen, I would expect, is that, that all organizations that provide engineering services to the public will be required to, to comply with the professional governance act. And I think, I think that is likely, that is likely to mean that organizations would need to comply with the, with the OQM, the organizational quality management auditing and then program with the, with engineers and geoscientists BC. So what does that mean? It means that the professional engineers that provide services in that department are compliant in terms of their continuing professional development. It means that we, we follow the guidelines around our record keeping, so in terms of our design work and our reports and so on, that we have organized records management around those, those products, engineering products. It means that we have, that we are all compliant with the engineers and geoscientists BC public code of ethics and there's something else that slips my mind. Oh, and we, and we use, we follow the practices in terms of use of the SEAL, in terms of engineering. So that's generally the, the rules around that. So for us, it involves just modernizing our records management and capturing some of those needs as operational functions that we need to meet year to year.
Counselor Patterson?
And just a further question to that, it sounds like that might be a little difficult to achieve, given the staff that we have right now?
Through you, Chair, I think the most challenging part to that one will actually be records management, but thankfully, I was, when I first heard about this, these changes, I was very worried because I, I thought that as an organization, we would need to have all of our records up to modern standards and that made me nervous, but then I've since confirmed that as long as we, any new, so basically any new work that we're doing, we're following that standard. So and in the past five or six years, we have quite good, you know, in terms of our engineering drawings and so on, our records, we do fairly well at that, at that. So there would be some work involved to improve, have the audit done and I think we'd be good to go, but it is part of our minimums that we require to do to deliver engineering services to the public.
Counselor Green, did you have any questions?
No, thank you very much, just some comments when you, when you reached that point. Thank you.
Okay, I just got a couple of questions then, if, with the counselors. Just for my clarification, I, I go to the, on the road repairs question, on the, granted it's a very high-level roll-up on the presentation, we have our roads, buildings and drainage at 86% if we actually fund the additional 3% this year and I'm, it's hard for me to kind of find the, like the roads, which is 1.7 million in the, in the specifics of the budget here and I, we had, I think, $826,000 in the pavement management budget, which doesn't include all paving last year and I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, where, what's being spent on the roads sort of year over year right now? Is that still in a bit of a lag in terms of what's actually being spent or is that, are we actually increasing our spending on the roads year over year at this point? An alternative?
Yeah, Mr. Haran?
Well, through you, Chair, or I'm speaking to the chair, so I don't have to speak to you. The, so our output last year, I think in terms of the, the budget was, I think we were short 100,000 in terms of, you know, we were, our budget was up around 900 something and we, and we were able to deliver just under 100 under that. Thankfully, those are funds that are carried forward easily, so we will end up making up for that this year and without any trouble. So some of it, it's just a matter of having that work organized in a way that we don't, sometimes it's a matter of we have to finish the underground work before we get in and pave the road. So more of Haran Road, for example, was meant to be paved last year, but then we weren't finished the project, so a lot of that will be carried forward to this year. So as the, I think that answers the question, yeah.
Yeah, it does. And the other question is sort of related to the same sort of graph, because I think that the fund increases bumped up all of those aspects to about 86%, but there's no sort of specific allocation, as I understand, on some of those. But one of them relates, of course, to this facilities manager. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that when we're spending money on a facilities manager, that we're also, like, we have some money available to actually do the work. It's, we have a report that says, basically, good grief, we don't have anywhere near money assigned to this. We're putting some money aside now, but it's a bit of a dollar average over many years, and doesn't mean we actually have money in the bank right now to do that work. So are we, I just want to make sure that if we're investing in a facilities manager, we're not having to manage no staff, to do nothing for five years, as we sort of wait to fill up our kitty with money to actually do meaningful work. And I notice the work that's been done here this year has been fantastic. We've done some real good preventative maintenance-type work on this building, and I want to make sure that we're not falling behind on that side of this and this piece. So I don't know how to answer as much of a question as I can make that, Mr. Haran.
Thank you, Chair. I think we've struggled with this one as well, because we really thought through, what's the best recommendation to make to solve this problem that the municipality has? And I think that the answer to this one is similar to about two or three years ago when staff was coming with asset management program information and saying, "We don't have all the information that we need to solve all of the asset management challenges that the municipality is facing, but what we know is that the funding levels are not enough to be sustainable. So what we're recommending is a certain amount be set aside in the reserves while we figure out exactly how to deliver on, you know, what to prioritize, what to do, and to build our capacity and capability to bring you further information to make those risk management governance decisions that are part of your role." And for this facilities management question, we're stuck in the same kind of situation. So what to recommend? Well, what we're recommending is this approach because we know enough to know that there's plenty of work to be done, even just in answering the questions of what next. And even in terms of being able to bring to you enough information to know if we have enough, if the plans are, you know, if we're financially viable in those areas. And maybe if we have some resources, we can see the situation might be a little bit rosier than expected, which is sometimes the case. But right now, we're left with not being able to deal with it at all. And so our proposal is around being able to move the football down the field, to use a sports analogy, and we don't know if we're going to make it to the end zone, but the progress is what we're hoping to achieve.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, Mr. Payne?
If I could just be brief and mention, our funding for roads is not dedicated, which means we have general infrastructure funding that we set aside. And so I've taken, I've averaged the unfunded portion of all those undedicated assets at about 86%. So we estimated on a high level that we should be setting aside about $2 million bucks for roads annually, and we're setting aside 86% of that. It's undedicated, but it's being set aside. That's about $1.7 million. You notice that doesn't correlate well to what the actual spend is, which is about $1.1 million. And part of that is, we need the folks to execute the plans to actually do the spending and create the capital plan. So setting aside funds is a start, and then executing and spending is the finish.
Very much appreciate that addition as well. Thank you. And I guess the last question I have on here, just in terms of, it was mentioned earlier about the need to get away from the break-fix type pieces and get in front of these things. And I think we all wholly agree with that, and that's one of the reasons that we've been putting money in to kind of get to that point. I guess one of the questions with the addition of new ask for new bodies is, quite often, and it's listed here in the tasks, and is the laterals hooked up on the pieces? Is there any possibility of using more of those resources internally to kind of do more planned pieces and let private entities do some of those hookups? Or any other sort of internal shifts around that we can use with existing staff to try and get in front of some of those projects so that we can get away from the break-fix?
I'm trying to figure out which part of the question to start answering first. Sorry, there's a lot there to unpack.
And in fairness, it's not entirely a budget question. It just has some impact in terms of how much more we keep funding internal staff versus revisiting the overall.
I'll start with the ratio of planned maintenance versus corrective. And to be more plain-spoken, the ratio of maintenance that we're supposed to do versus the maintenance we have to do because something's broken or leaking in terms of water or sewer backups or so on. So there's always going to be failures that you don't expect, that you have to run out and go fix. It's just part of the normal, whatever asset, whether it's ships or pipes in the ground or airplanes, that it's part of the deal. But there is a certain ratio of what that's supposed to be, and part of the work of engineering those fleets in terms of maintenance of those fleets is knowing what the ratio is supposed to be. And so where we're at now is that without a change in staff in 10 years, that the amount of emergency work that has to happen, and not necessarily urgent, but emergent in terms of unexpected, what are we doing today is not what we plan to do, has increased even in the last four years, to the point where it's starting to concern me significantly, which is why we're making that request. So what we're planning to do is by creating a section that deals with water and wastewater, it allows us to have some of that team be doing the planned maintenance that has to be done, that we say, "This is how many hydrants we're going to maintain this year. This is how many valves we're going to go make sure are working properly. This is how many meters we're going to replace," whatever it is. And then on the sewer side, "This is how many kilometers of pipe we're going to flush and root cut and make sure that they're working properly." That work always ends up with new things that are broken that we have to fix. And so the other side of the team is the ones that we'll deal with. You know, today, we're going to go fix some of the stuff that the other group found last week, or, "Hey, there's water leaks or issues that have popped up," and they'll go do that. And in the very busy times, both those teams will be doing emergent work as we try to get a grip on what's happening. I think the real idea there is to professionalize how we're planning, how much maintenance needs to happen in a year, measure our performance against that, and then assess in a year and two years, is that enough? Do we need, because there's a chance that we'll be coming back and saying, "Here's the data we've collected since 2020," so in '22, saying, "This is what we need now." But what we've asked for is what we think is the bare minimum ask based on the balance of risks at this time.
Thank you for that answer. And I think there's a recognition of that need, and so much appreciate the articulation of that. And I would also just, since Mr. DeBroschere doesn't get to speak very often at these things, I'll just express our appreciation for all the work that goes on in that group at Public Works, because they're the ones out there scrambling to do it and cover all those urgent and planned needs. And it's your teams, Dave, that, of course, do all that work. And it's very much appreciated. I know that stress falls on you and your team on a day-to-day basis. So hopefully, some of this changes will positively address some of that in the long run. So thank you for that work. Any other questions at this time? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much for the follow-up through you to Director of Engineering. I very much appreciate the aspect of succession planning that's been added to this with respect to the new positions. And the fact that not only will they back you up, but they'll also provide some excellent and needed support to the Emergency Operations Center, God forbid we have an emergency. So I do note that you've added the capability extension for the operations planning functions for the EOC Center. And I'm pleased to see that that's most likely related to the emergency plans grant funding that's going to be going forward. I would presume that would tie in with keeping us all safe in emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. Counselor Green?
Yes, can I make comments?
You may, yes.
Okay, thank you. This is a crossroads decision, I feel, and I think it's one of the most important decisions that we will make as an organization going forward. And it touches on health and safety, long-term sustainability. And we've heard the words sustainability a lot this evening, and quality of life. And these are the most obvious failures to our residents. And all of us, I think, at one time or another campaigned on the fact that infrastructure was our greatest need. So I'm going to speak very strongly in support of the ask that our director has made, backed up by the financial plan. And this is probably the first time in my experience in Oak Bay that we have been given the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I think we have to focus on the bad and the ugly in making this decision. Oak Bay will not be sustainable going forward if we don't provide the resources to this department that it badly needs. And there is a huge capacity issue. I think we've heard that from the director. And I think we all know that ourselves. And it's been years of perhaps not wanting to really deal with it, and I think we have to deal with it now. And I think all of us, we're committed at the beginning of our term to try and deal with this. And I do believe the majority of residents in the community want us to do that. And you can't sustain this community if you consistently tax in an artificial way. I think we have to manage it. It's not an easy decision for anyone. I don't think any politician likes to raise taxes, but I think in this case, it's absolutely warranted. And I want to speak in very strong support of these positions that are being requested for engineering services, because I think without them, we will not, well, we will fail on doing what we need to do for Oak Bay. And if we are to be a sustainable community going forward for many decades to come, I really think we have to take the bull by the horns. And I just want to say, I just calculated, it took 109 years for us to bring qualified planning staff to this community. We now have a qualified engineer in whom I have great trust, and I think that we should trust the advice we're being given. And those are my comments. Thank you. And I really should thank Director Haran, his staff, and Director Payne for providing a really, you know, a stark assessment of where we are with infrastructure and asset management. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. You weren't very clear about which was the bad department and which was the ugly department. And the good department, or that. Is there any other discussion at this point on the engineering public works sections? We're doing sewer utility and water utility, I believe, separately. Is that correct?
Yes, we're continuing to roll through the Engineering and Public Works Department, which includes those two.
Okay, let's get to that, because it's getting late, and we should try and wrap this up for a reasonable hour.
Yes, yes, Your Worship. I will be brief, I'll be very brief then in discussing the Public Works Division of the Engineering Department, Engineering and Public Works Department, unless there are any questions. First, I'll just speak briefly about the solid waste fees. I believe there was a pause in the increase to the rate in 2019, which is why you see a projected increase of 4% this year. So staff intend on bringing forward a bylaw to address that. Otherwise, you're simply shifting the proportion of the solid waste that gets paid by taxes, which can be a decision by council if you wish. You also notice that the solid waste happens to, just by happenstance, to be increasing by approximately 3.6%. That's almost entirely due to a $25,000 increase in our organics contract, which is an 8% increase. They're experiencing difficulty attracting labor, so that's the reason why that's happening. And then the last variance on this page I'll discuss, unless there's questions, is the yard and building. And that's almost entirely due to $5,000 increase in the training expense for the folks that occupy that section. There is simply a $1,500 training budget previously. Questions about that section? Otherwise, we'll move to the utilities.
Is there any questions of committee? Counselor Green, any questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm not seeing any. We kind of addressed a lot of the public work-type questions in the engineering portion, so.
Absolutely. And I'll just mention briefly that the $49,000 increase outlined here was included in the conversation we had in watering utility rates. Wasn't formalized by any means, but 4.0 FTEs, full-time equivalents, were recommended at that point, and half of that funded by the storm drain. So that's what this is here. So for the sewer utility, this reflects a conversation that we had when we set the rates. However, council still can exercise discretion in what that increased revenue funds. The increase in revenue was projected to be 10.5% for both the taxation portion and the utility fee portion of the sewer utility. And that was recommended to increase the 1.0 FTE recommendation in sewer collection. Like, as mentioned, council may choose to distribute this increase elsewhere in the budget if you feel necessary. Staff have recommended to pause the transfer to reserve increases since the level that we have reached is what the target was in our asset management report. So until we refine that number, we haven't increased the transfer to reserve component of that budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff on this? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Worship. Less of a question and more just a comment. Council will recall that I raised an issue about the additional FTEs when we did discuss the rates bylaws. And I do very much believe and understand from the Director of Engineering that this is a bare minimum ask, and I do recognize the need for the staff to address the issues that we're dealing with. And I do recognize that the Director and then the Engineering Department is working overtime to develop that asset management framework and really give us the best idea of what we're facing out there. I just, I do raise again, just for council's reference, I have an abiding concern about how to contend with ongoing staffing in this regard, not because I don't think that this ask is reasonable, but mostly because I know that there are many unknowns around asset management and things that we don't know what we're looking at in the future. So I'm just, I'm very hopeful, we've talked with the, we've heard from the Director of Human Resources about the Human Resources Plan and the Associated Workforce Plan. And I'm really hopeful that Mr. Haran manages to, through his hard work, manages to gather enough information such that he can project staffing needs with more confidence into the future, and that isn't a deficiency on engineering's part. It's an artifact of having not enough information and dealing with a very old system. So I just want to raise that, not because, and I do, like I say, very much agree that this is a bare minimum ask, but I have concerns long-term with staffing needs to address this break-fix cycle that we're in and how long it might take us to get out of that. So I just raised that point.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Any other questions of staff at this time? Or sorry, of committee of staff at this time? Not seeing any. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'll just conclude the sewer utility budget by providing a bit of a five-year forecast, much like we do with taxation. And at this time, there doesn't appear to be any pressing expenditures outside of forced growth. So we're predicting anywhere between 2% and 3.5% annually in the increase to that. And that does not include a significant increase to our transfer to reserve capital, but you'll notice there is some increase built into that. So reasonable projection at this point, subject to refining.
Thank you very much. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I guess in parallel with this, we have the CRD charges, which are not Oak Bay charges. But I have a funny feeling that some of our repairs are going to look at sewer charge and say, "Oh, my God." I know these numbers for Oak Bay are not going up much, but I imagine the CRD ones are raising fairly precipitously. Is it possible to get a preview of what those rates might be? Or should we have to wait until closer to bylaw time?
Through Your Worship, the CRD rate did increase this year significantly. I believe overall revenue increased about 15%. And that, of course, was for the core area liquid waste treatment plant. I believe the phase up for that is complete. I could be wrong. up for that is complete. Um, I could be wrong. It could be complete in twenty twenty, but I, either way, tho- those rate increase should level off almost immediately, either in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. This is what the C R D has communicated to us.
That's my understanding. Twenty twenty, I think this is the last, the twenty twenty is the last year of those significant increases, and then it'll be operational increases.
That's my understanding. And so we have incorporated that into our rate and... Cross your fingers. Now, just to discuss the water utility bu-, uh, water utility, uh, budget, very, very similar conversation that we had. Uh, the increase here, thirteen percent, is related to, uh, the two and a half F T's that were recommended in staff, recommended by staff in this budget. However, the transfer to reserve budget is increasing at a pace of a hundred thousand dollars per year, uh, because we're about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars away from the asset management target. So, um, tha- that's the reason for, uh, the, um, water utility revenue increase here. But again, Council has the, the authority and discretion to distribute that revenue to, uh, throughout the budget i- if it, um, believes it could be better distributed, uh, based on the, uh, budget here. To provide a bit of a five-year forecast, again, uh, there are some, uh, forthcoming increases that we've been able to anticipate by reviewing the C R D budget. Um, most of these increases that are, uh, anticipated between fi-, uh, three point two and six percent are related to the bulk water purchase. And when we drill down into what the bulk water, uh, cost drivers are at the C R D, uh, no surprise, they're increasing their transfer to reserve for their water mains, uh, which is driving the bulk water cost to us. So we're predicting, uh, again, between th- three point two, two percent and six point one eight percent increase to our water utility revenues from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. Your Worship, that will conclude today's budget deliberations, if it pleases the Chair.
Uh, pleases me just fine. We'll just see where the committee's at. The, uh, I just want to just point out to, uh, to the committee though, so, uh, you know, part of our responsibility is to go through this and make some decisions about, uh, where we're going to move forward, where we might want to hold back a little bit and, and those pieces. And, um, I think for ourselves and for anybody at home, uh, pages twelve and twenty-one of the, of the document, as it, the version two as it is, which is the special initiatives, uh, that carry forward our, are some of our pieces. And the, um, on twenty-one has our staff recommended priority order for some of the, um, uh, pieces in there. I think, uh, those are the things we probably should be looking at, not tonight necessarily, but just as a, uh, as a piece going forward. Because, uh, as much as there's a tremendous amount of really well-laid out information and very informative information, I think, uh, when we get down to really for our policy, uh, and budgeting, decision-making criteria, those are probably the two critical ones. Uh, and, and of course, we're, we're free to pull up any other ones that we see fit out of the document, but they're nicely summarized there, and I think they're, they're worth sort of, uh, looking over. Um, but not tonight. I just want to sort of, uh, highlight that. I, I'll use this as a last chance for anybody to, uh, to make final, uh, questions or anything of staff at this point. Otherwise, we'll re- we'll return on, uh, in March for the Capitol discussions. Um, is Miss Green, uh, Counsel Green have anything to add?
No, I don't think so. I'm just very grateful to staff for all the com- very complete work that they've done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Green. Ms. Varela?
Uh, Your Worship, we're actually back on February twentieth to consider, to continue that discussion. Sorry.
Just wishful thinking, wishful thinking. Yes, I think Counsel Zelka? Counsel Zelka?
Uh, very much appreciate, uh, that one more opportunity to speak. Um, you made, made reference to pages twelve, uh, and, and beyond, but regarding the special initiatives and how they're laid out from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. I just wanted to ask through you two, uh, Director Finance, um, if we so choose, uh, could we possibly move some of these, uh, figures around? Um, are we, is that within our, our discretion to, to adjust things if we find, uh, tax increases are too high one year, or maybe, uh, there might be some room, uh, uh, in the, in the social contract, uh, in other years?
Uh, through Your Worship, absolutely. The special initiatives, mind you, aren't really tax-related because they're, um, accumu-, uh, cumulative surplus funded. So moving that around won't change the tax increase, but certainly distribute how we spend our money. Um, page twenty-one, as correctly pointed out by the Chair, are, are really the reasons for the, for what's driving the two, the two thousand twenty, um, uh, tax increase. And, and if you review even further, um, you will see a s- a similar, uh, accounting for the remaining years. So you can move those decisions around as you wish. Uh, uh, staff have prepared what we recommend in, in what order, uh, but it's to the discretion of Council, absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel Zelka. And I, I, I think that's probably a good message to leave this on as well. We have a, I think a lot of our good financial decision is not, I think we all recognize, most of this is necessary. And, uh, there are, sometimes it's hard to make, move things together in blocks because the numbers look big and it's, and it's intimidating. Uh, and I think what I really appreciate is staff looking at this from a very, uh, thorough eye of what they think is best. And, and certainly there are, there are downsides sometimes to doing things in incremental steps. Where you hire one person one year and then wait a year for another person, and wait another year for a third person, um, where you can't actually sort of have a cohesive team doing all the work you're supposed to do until you have the, the, the full complement. So, um, it's up to us at the end of the day to make those decisions. But I, I, I really, once again, want to appreciate, express my appreciation to staff for, for really looking at this in the, in the clearest possible way, with the best possible outcome for the, for the long-term benefit of the community. And then we have to turn our eyes to it in terms of the broader, uh, social contract, as, as Counsel Zelka's rightly put. Um, so with that, we'll just say the motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
In seconded, uh, all who's in favor, opposed and opposed, we'll see people on, for a different meeting and, uh, committee of the hall on Monday night.